I'll go ahead and open this meeting. January 2nd, 2013. Can't believe it's already here. Oceanside City Council, Hubbard District and CDC. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Wood.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Fellwitt.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Faleen.
For the city attorney.
Thank you. Council meeting closed session to discuss the following items. Item 1, conference with labor negotiator involving the Oceanside City Employees Association, management employees of the City of Oceanside and the Western Council of Engineers. Item 2, conference of legal counsel on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation by the city in one case, significant exposure to litigation involving a letter from Corey Briggs dated December 21st and a letter from Maria Severson dated December 21st. Two cases. Item 3, conference with real estate negotiator. Item 3A, the 76-acre Center City Golf Course property, negotiating parties City of Oceanside and Goat Hill Partners LLC, under negotiations price and terms for the lease of the property. Item 3B, conference with real property negotiator involving the El Corazon property, negotiating party City of Oceanside and the International Swimming Hall of Fame, under negotiations terms for the use of the recreational real property.
Holly, you had your light on. Did you need something? Okay. We'll adjourn to the closed session.
Faleen.
Here.
Councilwoman Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Mr. Clerk, send calendar, please.
Send calendar. Item number 4. 4-5. Item number 4 is approval to waive reading of the text ordinances and resolutions considered at this meeting and provide that ordinance shall be introduced after reading only of title.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The other thing, is it public on either one of these?
No, public.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull item number 5 and move approval for the balance for item number 4.
Stand up. Number 5 will be pulled by Esther. Vote on the motion. Do we have a second? We don't. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to item number 5, this is a request to apply for funds from Sandeg for the Mission Avenue Improvement Project. Bottom line is that more and more I'm getting feedback from the public that they don't, they didn't understand that this was going to be a one-way street. And a lot of, I'm anticipating that once this starts to really happen, more and more people are going to be complaining about this and wondering how this was, you know, passed and how we're paying for these funds. And of course, at the time that this was approved, there were some statements about how, well, we can always change this later. We can always, you know, redo it to, you know, two one-way roads, you know, going east and west. And while I appreciate that that, there can be a change later on, you know, we can always try this and then, you know, if it's not going to really work for our community, that it can then be changed, that, I think, is a waste of public funds. And I'm, the reason for my pulling this is that I believe at this point, while I would love to see improvements, in fact, I even suggested that we have, you know, more of a bicycle-friendly, you know, this is an opportunity to have a separate bike path and even if you chucked it down to one-way each lane, that this was a golden opportunity to start moving towards this idea that a lot of bigger cities than us who want to go the way of a bicycle-friendly, this would have been the time to, you know, taking the initiative. And we didn't do that here. The idea of having reverse diagonal, you know, backing into basically pedestrians smelling up the gas fumes, I just think that we could have done a better job. So I'm going to be voting against this. But definitely have an interest in getting smart growth funds for our city. Definitely wanting to see funds, an application for funds in terms of coast highway. So those are my objections and reasons. Thank you.
Councilmember Faleen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on some of the points there as for my own education based on the comments Councilwoman Sanchez has made. At this point in the process, is the Sandeg approving a concept or are they approving a specific project that if we were to turn it down, basically the money would be gone? At what point are we committed to the specificity that, you know, that we've already approved? Because I attended, you know, a lot of the workshops, and it's certainly true, like all workshops, that, you know, they aren't always well-attended, but, you know, the world belongs to those who show up. And so where are we in terms of having to stick to a specific plan and be able to get the Sandeg funds?
Councilmember Faleen, Shandabick Associate Planner. The answer to your question is both. When we show the concept plan to Sandag, they're going to hold it to that concept plan when we do the construction drawings. So they want to see the concept plan. They also want to see the construction drawings. And if you do 60% construction drawings, 80%, 90%, they want to see each phase because they're approving their grant based on that concept plan. If you vary from that concept plan that was approved, it could affect the funding.
Okay. Now, in terms of the priority of what's significant, I mean, and I could be wrong, but I would think the decision on whether I can have a one-way street versus a two-way street would be pretty significant in their consideration, but I would think, I can't imagine they'd be quibbling too much on what type of parking you have, you know? So how do they kind of prioritize these?
They prioritize, let's see, one of the main priorities is how far are you along in the process and do you have the funding for the backup on it? So they're looking for, even if a project is better design on some other projects, but it's way, a year or two away or a year and a half away, they will fund a project that is closer to reality, closer to construction drawing. So that's one of the priorities they take a look at. In this case, what they're really looking at is a complete street, we're adding a bicycle path, we're trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly and so forth, and how does that interrelate with the transportation, walkability, et cetera, et cetera? So they're looking at that, what they call a complete street, which is to be utilized by all members of the community, from cyclists to walkers to vehicles, so.
Yes, excuse me, one second. City manager, please.
Oh, well, Mayor, councilmembers, and just to add on to that, the project has been approved, all the environmental studies have been done, has been approved all the way. As Mr. Babick just mentioned, we are at 60% design completion. We expect, and again, with some caveats in regards to what the Department of Finance allows and doesn't allow, with these grant monies and the other grant monies, we would expect to be under construction within fiscal, within county or 2013. So the issue of it'll be one-way westbound on Mission Avenue and then eastbound on Seagate. So those improvements are contemplated as part of this project.
Well, you know, and I certainly opened any tweaking, if you will, based on, you know, new information or some concerns brought up, but I certainly wouldn't want this body to take any action that would put at risk this Sandeg funding that we've bought so hard to get, but I plan to vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Kern?
Thank you. I'm going to turn my mic on. Thank you. I'm going to move approval on this.
I'll second.
Actually, I took the bike ride through Long Beach, which is a very bicycle-friendly community, and the one-way couplets are quite prevalent in that city because of bicycles. And this is our first attempt to have the couplet streets to accommodate bicycling. So the idea, and like Mr. Babick said, the complete streets, this is not only accommodates for bicycles, with the wider sidewalks, it accommodates more pedestrian-friendly environment and sidewalk cafes, all those things that we talked about. This was a lengthy public process, very well-attended public workshops. I think I attended two of them. And then we had a public hearing here that went on for quite a while when we decided on this. I think the only thing that was left up in the air that may or may not, that we probably could change, was the reversed angle parking. That if that didn't seem to work out, that we can go back and restripe the street to have regular diagonal parking. And that was the only comments I've ever heard from anybody, is how is that reversed angle parking going to work? Is actually, reversed angle parking is more friendly for bicycles because you're heading out. So I think that's, you know, part of the idea of having a bicycle-friendly street because people are actually looking out when they pull out of the parking spot instead of backing out into the bicycle lanes. So that was my motion and hopefully the council can support it.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, just a minute aside, I have been presented with, by, actually as a coastal commissioner, have heard from the bicycle community, the advocates, and they are pushing for separated bike paths and hope to be the first city to be this bicycle-friendly. When they spoke, I actually told them that I thought that we might be the first ones to do separate bike paths, so I guess they're going to be the ones, so, thanks.
Most of the lights, my comments, I think these have pretty well have been expressed by us and the public. I had my concerns and a couple of issues too. The reverse parking was a concern. Some people had told me they didn't like that, they couldn't back in, it'd be a problem. Exhaust fumes at the outside cafe might be an issue. The one-way street was an issue for the, excuse me, NCTD and the buses, I understand that. Most people understand they're going to turn left or right onto Mission Avenue to get to I-5. This will confuse a great deal of people in Oceanside. With that being said, it's been kicked around, and I'm still going to support it because that's where we went. I think later on, we're going to have some feedback on some negatives, and I expect that too, but with that, please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1.
Mr. Clerk, General Line, this is number 6, please.
Item number 6, we have the city council approval of a recreational disposition and development agreement with Sudbury Development Incorporated, including athletic fields lease agreement for the development of multi-use athletic fields, approval of a disposition and development agreement for the commercial development, and the balance of the recreational area development at El Corazon, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents.
Thank you.
Doug?
Well, I need some technical help here, but I'm sure I'll get it shortly. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Doug Eda, real estate manager, City of Oceanside. Today, staff would like to... Today's staff is asking the city council to approve agreements with Sudbury Development Company for the development of El Corazon. We've been working on two separate agreements to help ease financing for each of the projects. The first agreement is a recreational disposition and development agreement that handles the multi-use athletic fields that would be considered Phase 1 of this project. The second agreement is a disposition and development agreement for the commercial areas and the balance of the recreational areas. I'll refer to these as DDAs and recreational DDA. Some of the specific terms of the recreational DDA is it allows Sudbury to develop approximately 97 acres of the 212 recreational area designated in the El Corazon specific plan. Of that 97 acres, approximate 97 acres, about 68 acres is for 20 multi-use athletic fields in addition to some maintenance areas and some open space areas for purposes of tournament staging, as well as the slope areas that we're going to have to create as part of the grading plan. The other areas consist of about 21 acres of parking lot, which is a Class 2 base parking lot or DG parking lot. It should hold up to, I believe, 2,200 to 2,400 vehicles for the multipurpose field events. The other area is about approximately 8 acres. It'll be an open play area, two athletic fields, as well as a park area and a pedestrian walking trail that borders the northern portion of the fields. The other components are, the city actually has an obligation to grade these fields, and they're doing it pursuant to the El Corazon Reclamation Plan. The city would like 60 days to verify its grading costs to grade the site, again, per that plan, as well as construct other improvements. Once the city verifies that cost, Sudbury will have 100 days to conduct its due diligence. And their due diligence primarily consists of finding financing for their portion of the cost to develop the site, as well as raising equity to fulfill that component. In addition, Sudbury is required to submit a development plan for the improvements to be put onto the graded pad. Again, the graded site is done under the Reclamation Plan. Any improvements to that will have to have a separate development plan. Sudbury is required to submit that within 90 days after the due diligence period. That will also require an environmental review and process, and that will go through, again, the planning process. Before Sudbury, I'm sorry, before the city grades any portion of that site, Sudbury is required to provide financial assurances that they will complete the construction of the field component of the property. As part of the recreational DDA, there's a lease that's going to be signed between the city and a subsidiary of Sudbury. The lease term is for 25 years with two genuine options to extend. However, before Sudbury can exercise those options, the city has the right to terminate those, terminate the agreement at the start of every option period by providing evidence that has financing to develop the recreational components of El Corazon per the specific plan. So even though there's a right to have a 25-year lease, before they again make any further improvements or before they continue that lease, the city can come in with financial resources to build it out just the way the specific plan called out. The use allowed there is for athletic events and related community activities such as Christmas tree sales, concerts in the park, things of that nature, possibly a fireworks show. As part of the lease agreement, the Sudbury Group is required to enter into two use agreements. One of them then is with the Soccer Club of Oceanside to utilize some of the fields on an ongoing basis, subject to tournament weekends. The other one is an agreement with Surf Cup, who is a major operator of a world-class soccer tournament down in San Diego. I don't know if you are familiar with that, but they hold it, I believe, twice a year, and it draws people from around the world. And it brings in roughly, I think, $23 million annually to the areas of San Diego. As part of that use agreement, they're allowed to use, or allowed to have, 28 major tournaments. A major tournament will be defined as 10 or more fields in use at any given time. The reason we limited that to 28 is we wanted the senior center to be able to operate on 24 weekends to conduct activities such as weddings and parties and whatnot during those off weekends. As part of the deal with Surf Cup, the city required them to have at least two major events, which ties into what they're doing right now down in San Diego. The hopes are they're going to have significantly more events, not just Surf Cup, but other field activity-related tournaments. Rent under the lease agreement is a percentage rent based on annual gross sales. It is 10% of annual gross sales in excess of $1.4 million. There's a kicker at 15% once the annual gross income exceeds $4 million. City is hopeful that after year four, it can start seeing, hopefully, up to $100,000 in rent revenue, in addition to the benefits of having major tournaments at that site. And I quoted before that the Surf Cup alone down in San Diego with their two tournaments brings in $23 million. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen in Oceanside, but we can get a significant uptick in our TOT tax and sales tax revenue and other related income. The benefit of having this project is that the city does not have to maintain that site. It is 100% maintained by Sudbury, which not only includes the multi-use fields, but also the two public areas, public play fields, as well as the open space areas, as well as the pedestrian trail. The city will always have the right to relocate this use to other areas of El Corazon if they find a developer willing to develop some other components of the specific plan. As I said earlier, the city is required to grade the site, and there's a condition in the agreement that says that the city's costs shall not exceed $1.4 million to grade the site. A portion of that $1.4 million is already allocated to grading El Corazon under the Reclamation Plan. It's been set aside specifically for that use, so the city would just have to supplement the additional funds to grade the site as well as bring in some additional improvements. Sudbury's cost to develop the fields on top of the graded pad is approximately $3,318,000. That not only includes putting in the infrastructure for watering, it also includes buying equipment, and it also includes the facilities to house tournaments on the site. Yes, Sudbury will have a private use of the property, but it has affiliations, like I said earlier, with Soccer Club of Oceanside. Hopefully, that does in fact potentially make other fields available in Oceanside, but it also creates five fields that goes to a user of otherwise Oceanside parks that is now maintained by a private entity. We have a tentative schedule regarding the recreational DDA and lease agreement. We hope that the agreement is approved tonight, then we have by February 19th of 2013, verification of city grading costs. Less than 100 days after that, we hope Sudbury completes their due diligence and wants to move forward. We think by that time, we will have submitted a development plan to get the field-related developments approved, and then on June 1, 2013, we start construction of the city grading portion of the site. Through almost a nine-month period, the city will be constructing, Sudbury will then come in and finish their improvements, with the hopes on July 1, 2014, we have a first major tournament. Hopefully, that's the Surf Club tournament, similar to the one you see in San Diego. And I'll talk about the terms of the commercial DDA, or DDA for short here. There are two components of it. One of them is the commercial component, which allows for development of retail, office, hotel, and some vertical mixed-use residential, and the balance of the recreational, which can house the various other components of El Corazon specific plan. The preference on the recreation, well, the preference on the commercial is to lease the property to a developer. But because of trying economic times, because of tough financing criteria these days, and tenants not willing to enter leases on ground leases, there's also an option to try and purchase a property if certain conditions are satisfied by Sudbury, and that's primarily not finding financing available at favorable terms or finding tenants willing to go onto the site. The recreational component will always be ground lease. It's never going to be sold, so that will always retain, be retained in the ownership of the City of Oceanside. Under the deal, under the DDA, the Sudbury Group has initial period of seven years to develop the commercial component of the site. And then they have three, five-year options after that, but they have to demonstrate activity in order to get each of those three, five-year options. First five-year option is pretty much show some type of entitlement as well as start construction on some of the commercial components. The second five years, you have to have 20% of the project commercial completed, and in the third five years, you have to have another 20% completed on top of that. The recreational component has a 12-year period with two five-year options without demonstrating really the need to show any increase or any activity on the recreational side because the city has the right to go out and solicit a developer or develop the recreational site on its own. If they come up with a deal, whether it be for softball fields, baseball fields, swimming pools, or whatnot, they have the right to move forward with the development. However, Sudbury has the right to match that deal, so it should get done one way or the other if the city finds a developer for that particular portion of the recreational As part of the deal, we allowed Sudbury to phase, acquire by either lease or acquisition by fee, portions of the site. It should be no less than two acres at a time. This allows flexibility for development, and Sudbury must create a map in order to create legal parcels before they can proceed to acquire less than the entirety of the commercial area. The purchase price under the DDA is what we refer to as land residual value, and the ground lease is just a percentage of the land residual value, which is 10% of the LRV. The LRV is a formula that basically capitalizes rental revenue, then deduct developer costs, costs such as construction costs, architectural engineering permits, fees, et cetera, plus it also deducts a developer return on their costs. That was negotiated at 10.5%, which is a blended rate over the typical products that are occurring in today's marketplace. We needed to do it in this fashion, instead of establishing a price that may happen in seven years, because we don't know what that price could be in seven years. So we decided to work on an LRV formula rather than fixing a price today, which could be too low or could be too high depending on what happens seven years from now and the market the way it is today. Again, the LRV works both ways. It could work to our benefit, it could work to our detriment, but it was a fair way to determine a purchase price seven years down the road. The other major pertinent terms of the commercial DDA is that Sudbury is required to develop the field, begin operation, start maintaining those fields before they can ever take any step towards commercial development. There are also, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on the way you look at it, there's another developer on the site. So the developer, Sterling, has to allocate its share of development with Sudbury. We came up with a formula as to how each one of those can develop a portion of the commercial areas. It does not increase the overall commercial development that was allowed for the El Corazon specific plan. And before anything could happen commercially, before Sudbury can acquire the land either by lease or by fee, they have to demonstrate that they have financial ability to construct the site. So we're just not selling them a piece of land, they turn around and flip the land. We're always going to see something developed there by this guarantee. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Doug. Have a seat at sidebar, please. Appreciate it. Public on this?
Yes, we have three public members who'd like to speak.
Thank you. Good.
So may I call the first three individuals to step up to the podium? First, we have Nadine Scott, second, George McNeil, and third, Diane Nygaard.
Happy New Year, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, and I'm here tonight representing friends of El Corazon. We're the nonprofit organization that was created about 10 years ago to help the city and carry out the community's vision for El Corazon. And of course, you all know what that community vision is. It's a park in the heart of our city, a park with something for everyone, a wonderful park reminiscent of the great parks that are in all the great cities across this country. And what an exciting day this is that we're able to take this milestone step and move this project forward. It feels like the chamber should be filled with hundreds of happy kids who are going to benefit from this first piece of this project. We're very pleased to see that the project is moving forward in a way that's generally consistent with the specific plan that we all worked so hard on a few years ago, and that the public is going to get some real benefit from this. It's really not just the soccer fields that can, you know, be used for a number of purposes, but there'll be two general-purpose fields for the community. There'll be space freed up on the fields throughout Oceanside parks. There'll be a public trail that the community will have access to. So I think we'll all feel some real immediate benefit as this project moves forward. We're also pleased to see that it's very clear that the recreational land will stay in city ownership. There's only one issue that we want to kind of call to everyone's attention, and that is the fact that the commercial land, while there are some hoops associated with that, the commercial land could go to private ownership. So we remind both the developer and all of you that the community very much, part of the original goals and objectives for this project, going back to the adopted specific plan, is for all of this land to stay in public ownership. And with that, we... And with that, we should all be planning a wonderful celebration for the kickoff of the, um, grading plan, June or July coming up. Um, I think the guy said they're going to relocate the tent from Del Mar. They're sitting here to have the celebration, but whatever. Um, so we can all celebrate this milestone event moving forward with El Corazon. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi. George McNeil, 2153, Andalucia Way, Oceanside. Uh, I won't repeat the same things Diane said. Um, I just want to point out that, that this is a memorable day, a great day. It's, it's a big step along the way. Um, I urge your vote for it, uh, principally because it's a good program. It's a good, uh, thing that they really needs, really need in Oceanside, and also because of the people involved. Uh, the people with Sudbury and the people with Field of Dreams are, are quality folks. Um, I've seen their product in other places, and it is excellent, top draw. And, uh, we're going to get the best here. I think that's, uh, something we're aiming for and something we're going to get. Um, as far as the lease versus buy, yeah, when we first started, there was a strong, uh, feeling that everything should stay in the hands of the city, but economic times change, and, uh, you know, you have to, have to deal with the situation as it is. And the goal is to get the commercial up as soon as possible. Uh, so some flexibility there is, is not a bad thing. Um, so quite frankly, I just want to say I'm 100% in support of this, been working on this for a long, long time, and I'm glad to see it coming. Uh, I'll be there for the celebration and the big tent, uh, and I'll be there for the first tournament. Um, hopefully, uh, the head men's coach at Miracosta, Mr. Frank Zimmerman, will bring out some tournaments there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Good evening.
Good afternoon. We're still there.
Still afternoon.
It's right in Jack's face. Sorry about that. Um, Happy New Year, Nadine Scott. Um, generally, I'm supportive of these overall plan, developing the recreational content first. I am not in favor of selling the land. If you give a long enough ground lease, it's almost as easy to get financing as it is with a purchase agreement. This is the people's land. This was given to us, and I'll never agree to it being sold. I don't think that's appropriate. Um, one concern I had in, um, Mr. Edel's presentation is that Sudbury will have private use of everything but two fields. Does that mean we're all going to have to pay for parking? If that could be clarified, I'll go away happy person. Thank you.
No further public.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern.
Doug, did you want to address any of that before we start?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Kern, I, I will address that issue. Parking will be charged for during the tournaments, but there will be no parking paid for, for use of the, uh, public areas, the two fields, the open space area, as well as the walking path.
Okay. Um, there was one point in your presentation I'm a little confused on, and I'd like clarification. You know, you have, use the athletic fields, almost mutually exclusive use of the senior center, so when they use the athletic fields, they can't use the senior center? I mean, I, you were talking about, you know, the 28 weekends versus the 24.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Kern, the, the way it's set up is that there will be no major tournament for 24 of those weekends, which means that we know traffic conflict. If they want to schedule something the other 28 weekends, they surely can, and the traffic situation will be set up so that if you're going to the senior center on any of those given weekends, you'll be segregated, you'll go to the senior center, and it won't conflict with the, with the parking for the major tournament.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't precluding use. Um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to move a support approval of this, um, project, because I, like I said, I was actually part of the, the second El Corazon Committee when we first started working on the specific plan, and this is, you know, the vision that what we wanted is here, and I think everybody is generally supportive. As far as the commercial use and the ability to sell the land, I, I think we need to keep that in there for the flexibility of the financing of whoever decides to do that. There are some companies that will not go on leased land, and I know there was some comment about long-term leases, but our agreements aren't going to run 49 or 99 years to these developers. So the idea of having this go forward at this time and give that flexibility, I, I think would probably be the most appropriate way to go forward with this. So I, I don't know who, who they have in mind, but I know there's, um, some retail entities out there that just will not be on leased land. I, I don't care how long the lease is, they, they want to own the land that they're, uh, going to put their stores on or their offices on. And if we get into some type of residential development, um, most people like fee simple land. They want to be able to buy their own condo or buy their own, um, house instead of having a long-term lease, because, uh, I just, the thing about long-term leases, I always remember the Irvine Company, when all those houses were on leased land and the leases came due, and what happened with them, when Irvine Company came back and said, oh yeah, we're going to quadruple the rate of the lease on the land that's sitting underneath your, your house, even though you think you own your house. So I think that's probably the, the fairest way to go. So with that, I hope we have council support.
Second. Second. Councilmember Faleen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I think, I certainly plan to vote yes for this, and I think this certainly should be a 5-0 vote, because I think it's truly an Oceanside success story, where the communities come together, the staff has come together, the city councils have come together, and I'm certainly kind of part of the tail end of this process here, and so I certainly thank all those who have gone before, and, you know, we certainly wish, uh, more activity in Oceanside heard the way, uh, this project has taken place. So for all those who played a part in making this day possible, pat yourself on the back and, uh, let's celebrate. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, see, let's see, we've been working on this, you and I have been working on this for 12 years. Um, since, well, in 98, there were, there was a vision of El Corazon, and that vision was, um, challenged when the property was thrown in as part of the negotiations for our beach resort. And so, um, a lot of the community, um, fought that, fought back and put on a proposition, and really that was, um, the reason why we're even here today, is because of the community coming forward and saying, you know, we don't want a golf, just, just a golf course there. We want to have what we talked about, you know, in the last, you know, the decade before, and that is, there's this gift of land with, um, something like 2.0, I forget how much, 2.4 million dollars, um, reclamation, and, uh, you know, what, what should the city do? Well, this was put out to the community, and that was a true, I believe that, that was a true outreach to the community. My understanding is that there were several meetings all over the city, and, um, you know, the vision was for what is very, you know, very close to what is before us today. I, I did have some, um, concerns, um, going forward in that it was put to us, um, and to the community that we shouldn't have to pay for, uh, this park, that it, it would be paying for itself in the sense of the commercial and the retail, um, would be generating funds to be able to provide, um, the recreational opportunities. And so I do have some of those concerns, that, you know, that, that mechanism, um, that, that mechanism continue to be, um, what we're depending on in terms of making sure the recreation is, you know, beyond the, the fields, um, the other recreational opportunities. So I do hope that there is still a commitment, um, by this developer, that, um, all the other recreational, you know, dreams, that they also come true, um, besides the soccer. Um, the other issue that I had, had to do with, um, you know, we all wanted to, to, to have this happen as quickly as possible, soccer fields, and so we talked about the temp, building temporary fields, and, um, for the last few months, you know, in, in, discussions, we've been talking, you know, in closed session, the way that, that they've been, um, characterized have been temporary fields, that the entire 25 years, whatever, 25 plus two 10-year extensions, it was always going to be looking like temporary fields. And I was, you know, I wondered about that. Like, I see that you're going, that, um, that, uh, the developer is looking to put in 3.3 million dollars, City of Oceanside, 1.4 million dollars, um, it, you know, what, why is it still going to look like it's going to be temporary fields? Um, my, I hope that they start to look really good. Uh, yes, the kids need fields right away, and so, you know, we've all been pushing for, for these fields to get built. I hope they don't look like temporary fields for longer than a temporary time. Um, so that's, that's a concern. I, I hope you will make them look a lot better than, you know, than what the, the word sounds like. Um, but that, that is how staff has been talking about, well, these are going to be temporary fields for the entire time, that it's not really going to be any kind of real permanent fields. Um, so, uh, that's a concern. Um, I do have a question for staff. The, the lease payments talk about 10% of annual gross in excess of 1.4 million dollars and 15% of gross over, over 4 million dollars, in excess of, um, 4 million dollars. Is there a minimum lease payment?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, uh, no, there's not. It's only percentage rent payment.
So what is the anticipated income for this, and, and is that going to, you know, how is that going to go back into El Corazon?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, the anticipated revenue comes from a direct rental payment through the percentage rent, but more than anything, it, we're focusing on the indirect benefit to the city, and that's through increased sales tax, new purchases from, from the tournament participants, as well as TOT tax from the 28 major tournaments they're trying to hold there, hold there every, uh, year. So we're looking, hopefully, again, in the millions range to, to supplement the, the city revenues.
So are, are you telling me that realistically, we're never going to see lease payments to the city?
No. Uh, yes, we are going to see lease payments, it's just that the higher amount of revenue to the city will come in the form of TOT taxes and sales tax revenue from all the tournaments that are being held there. To answer your question, I do not direct where all that money goes, that, that's your policy decision?
Right.
It hasn't been made?
So, um, my question, my initial question, which is direct, direct question, um, are we going to get any lease payments at all? Is that...
Yes, we're anticipating getting lease payments.
Okay. Um, how much and when?
Again, we're anticipating, uh, up to 100,000 dollars beginning in year four. That's our hopes of direct lease payments. It could be less, it could be more, and, and again, that's based on the percentage of revenue. The more tournaments they have, the higher the lease payments, but again, in the more indirect revenue that the city should get.
Okay. Well, in line, in line with what we, we, this discussion that we've had, very, very, very public, very, 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 very public discussion, um, which is that, that the revenues that are produced, um, within El Corazon, that they somehow stay in El Corazon, um, for, you know, for building out the, the, the parks, um, part for, actually for the recreational, um, piece, which is what the city, um, was, would be trusted in in terms of, of maintaining the recreational uses, uh, above and beyond the private uses. So I am really going to push for that, that we continue to, um, make sure that what the, what the community said would happen, that is, that we have this, this, this recreational, these recreational opportunities, that whatever is generated, revenues are generated, um, above and beyond whatever costs the city has, will go right back to El Corazon. There, there are any number of, um, things that we, that we will be needing for, for public recreation, for our youth and for our seniors. Now, I do have a question about senior. With this use, is there, is it going to be any impacts to the senior center?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, there could be potential traffic impacts on certain weekends, if they so elect to have activities on those same major tournament weekends, but during the course of the week, there's typically only five fields being used, so there'll be very minimal impact to the senior center. There, there is an existing berm at the west end of the senior center that will remain, so there will be virtually no visual impact either way.
Okay, and, um, how many parking spots are there at the senior center?
I'm not sure how many are at the senior center.
Do we have that info? Well, those will still remain only for the senior center, right? That you, the, people won't be able to park there, um, use those spaces for other reasons, right?
For senior center activities only. When they have any type of tournaments there at the site, there will be traffic management to see that it stays that way.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager.
Oh, Mayor, Councilmembers, I want to address, uh, just briefly, Councilmember Sanchez's issue on the revenue staying with, uh, El Corazon. Uh, as Mr. Edel has mentioned, it's probably unlikely that we will see any significant revenues until year four, and even then, uh, the revenues off the recreational component are going to be, um, inadequate to pay for any further development of, uh, future recreational opportunities under the specific plan. Uh, also, uh, prior council actions, uh, you advanced, uh, general fund monies to El Corazon with the commitment that at such time as El Corazon gets developed, that those monies would be paid back, and so, um, we still have that obligation at some point to pay those monies back. Uh, I think that the bigger issue will be, is once the commercial starts, there's a probably a higher revenue stream that you could then rely on to look at furthering, um, other recreational opportunities in El Corazon, but the, the revenue from the fields themselves, it's unlikely that we will see a significant direct revenue. As Mr. Edel mentioned, it'll be the indirect revenue of having those tournaments and filling up the, those hotel rooms, uh, that would be a bigger impact to the community-wide, not necessarily directly to El Corazon.
Thank you. Um, and one, um, final line of questioning. The, um, staff report talks about, um, a 25-year lease and two, uh, 10-year extensions, and it talks about how the city will have an opportunity to, um, before those extensions, if the city, um, is able to further the rest of the development of El Corazon per the, um, the plan, that the city can then, um, opt in to do that. But in your presentation, you talked about seven years and then two five-year extensions. What is, um, what does each pertain to?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, the 25-year period of time plus 10-year options is for the recreational area only, the, the fields. The seven-year is for the commercial development, so they're, they're different, they can be developed differently. We're not going to be able to come in and fund the commercial side, because that was never the intent, it was to fund the, the recreational side. That's why that provision is in the recreational 25-year lease.
So, um, what about in 15 years? If, if there's a desire by this community to do, say, a, um, a bond to make this happen, um, could the, could the community do that, or they're stuck to waiting to 25 years?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, they could not do it before 25 years unless the group was in default.
Um, and the final comments I want to make are, um, that I've had several groups contact me regarding use of fields. So even with this, um, with this plan, it feels like we're going to continue to be in high demand, there's still going to be continued high demand for fields. Um, and, and I'm talking about organized, besides, um, Soccer Club of Oceanside, there are several other clubs that are, that have a lot of kids from Oceanside that, that, you know, want to play, and, um, I'm just wondering, how are we going to be able to accommodate that with this lease?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sanchez, it, it is the hopes that potentially, when the Soccer Club of Oceanside uses the fields here at the, at El Corazon, that some fields are freed up in other areas of the city, then those get scheduled through our typical scheduling process with, with the Parks and Rec Department.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Feller, please.
Well, let's get some joy in this decision. This is a, this is a pretty big day. Um, I was one of those bad people that thought that, that, that this should be a golf course a few years ago, but I've, uh, seen the light, been beat up about it. I think this is a, a great start to what we're trying to do in, in the center of Oceanside. Um, I had a question that came up during these conversations. We have the gate that seals off the road right now. There might be some thought as to, uh, construction vehicles going through there and all that type of thing, the gate that's on Senior Center Drive, uh, that may, may need some, uh, you may need to rethink how we block... uh, you may need to rethink how we block the, the people out of there. Um, I, that's up to you. You, you can figure that out. And I had, uh, underlined a few things that I talked to Peter about, uh, ahead of time, so I didn't have to had, uh, have, have, um, as much time here. So I'm, but I do know that if we need to move these temporary fields, we, we have to pay for them. Is that correct? Once, once, if, if they determine that more recreation is going to go in up there, do we, 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 the city of Oceanside have to, to move those fields?
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor Feller, yes, we would have to pay for that cost if we wanted to utilize that area of, of El Corazon.
And, um, I, uh, agree with Councilmember Sanchez that there is a great need throughout the whole city. The, you know, MLK has enough room up there on that, uh, eastern end of the park that you could end up putting, uh, a couple of football fields and baseball, uh, on that end, uh, to, to move soccer out of there. Uh, there's, there's other things that can be done throughout the city. So that's, that's exciting for the other, uh, youth, uh, organizations that, uh, that really need space. Uh, and the last thing is, um, I threw it out, maybe we could have a grand opening there, uh, for these fields on, uh, July 4th, uh, 2014 with fireworks. I think that'd be a great, great way to kick that place off. So anyway, I'm really glad this is happening. Thank you.
Please vote. We'll take a, about a five or so minute break. About 5 o'clock when we come back. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't been here before, out the double doors, up the stairs, waters and restrooms. About a five-minute break. Thank you.
Am I, am I next?
No.
Russ has been, been one of the housing. We're continuing that to the six.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. Crowd really expanded. A couple of things, we'll have some presentations for wonderful people, but for right now, if you have a pager or phone, put it on vibrator, silent. We'd appreciate it. We're going to start off with a couple of things. We're going to have the, um, Pledge of, and invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you stand for both of those, when they're finished, have a seat. But, uh, we'll start with that. Valerie, please.
Please stand at this time. For the invocation this evening, it will be done by our city clerk, Zach Beck, who is also the youth pastor for Gateway Community Church.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for today and for this blessing of life. Uh, Lord, we thank you for the blessings of this past year, and we ask that you continue to provide us with your guidance, wisdom, discernment in 2013. And Father, we just ask that we would be wise stewards of your world, and we just ask that we would, uh, continue to seek after your guidance and wisdom in all that we do. We praise in your name. Amen.
At this time, from the Soccer Club of Oceanside, we have four youth that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Zach Boltmeyer. Derek Jennings. And Manny Karyuki.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's tighten it up a little bit. I'm behind you, that's fine. Please be seated. Thank you. By the way, parents, if you want to move around for photographs, that's what it's for. Also remember, it's live on KCOT, and you can get copies from them, or they replay it, and you can tape it for the family and friends. Valerie, please.
Now, we're going to have our team presentation. From the Soccer Club of Oceanside, we have the Division III Boys Recreational All-Star Team and their coach, Anthony Benvenuto. Their assistant coach is Javier Silva. The other players, Alexis Altamirano. Ray Arias. Jake Buckman. Felix Camuro. William Gomez. Santiago Gonzalez. Max Lopez. Luis Modano. Jesse Perez. Adrian Soriano. And also here tonight, we have Bill Reitman, who is the president of the Soccer Club of Oceanside.
First off, if I may, ladies and gentlemen, we have these just about every council meeting because we want to show our stars of the community, number one, boys and girls in all the sports, because they're, have our name. They represent the city of Oceanside in local events, county, state, national sometimes. So they're a part of the city of Oceanside. We want to thank not only the players, the coaches, the families, the team moms that help us make better teams throughout the city of Oceanside. So with that in mind, that's our opportunity to give them certificates, say thank you, have them live on TV for the families and the friends. So with that, I'm going to pass the mic off to the big boss, and then you can pass it down to the coaches. Big boss, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor Wood. Um, my name is Valerie, I'm the president of the Soccer Club. So, uh, real quick, I just wanted to say thanks to the, the city council and the city of Oceanside, because without their support, we wouldn't have the beautiful fields of Mansby Cannon. Currently, we have over 100, we have 125 teams playing and over 1,600 kids. That's just the fall season. We, we, uh, average over 2,000 kids per year. So without the support of the city, we really wouldn't be able to serve the community like we, like we do. So, um, I'm really appreciative there. And we are also looking forward to, uh, El Corazon coming online. For those of you here for the earlier, um, presentation and the vote at past 5:00, so that is fantastic news. So, um, I'm going to pass it over to Anthony about the specific team, but before I do that, I just want to embarrass him. He's also a director with our club. He was, uh, coached for probably five or six years. And this year, 2012, going back a year, he won, his teams won. I'm going to let him talk about this specific team, which is a very good team, by the way. I, I had a chance to watch him. But in 2012, his teams won, not one, not two, not three, but eight championships in tournaments that he played throughout the year. Now, I, I gotta say something else that's less, uh, that might humble him a little bit, otherwise his head might fit through the door. He also set the record with the Soccer Club of Oceanside for the most yellow cards in a game at 11. But they weren't deserving. So, here's Anthony.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Mayor Wood. Um, a little bit about the team, um, for you, for those of you, um, who don't know, this is an under-14 boys' all-star team, made up from eight different rec teams this last fall season. Um, I'm lucky enough to have almost two players from each team represented here today, some under-14, some under-13. Um, very well represented from the whole club for the under-14 age group. Uh, we're only one of 11 all-star teams that are representing Oceanside right now. We're going to Escondido next weekend, so please come out, support all of them. This team right now, we've won our first two tournaments. We have not lost a game yet. We've only given up two goals, scored 29. So they're pretty much right on par where I think they should be. Um, hopefully they'll carry on too next weekend and a couple of weeks after that in Temecula. So we'll represent Oceanside the best we can. Thanks.
How photograph, guys, can you kind of tighten it up for it won't be so wide and a little sideways maybe? Folks, you can move around, take pictures. Everybody's got a camera. Championship team representing the city of Oceanside. Let's hear from them, folks. No, we appreciate you guys for really making a difference. We're going to delay this to the end so we have an audience to behold. We'll have the, uh, report from City Attorney in closed session.
Thank you. City Council met in closed session to discuss the following items. Item one, conference of labor negotiator, uh, involving the following employee organizations: the management employees of the city of Oceanside, the Oceanside City Employees Association, and the Western Council of Engineers. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on that item. Item two A, initiation of litigation by the city in the matter of one case. The city council authorized the filing of a lawsuit against Tracy Sandoval and Adam Montesantos. Uh, that case has now been assigned to number 3420134586. Um, the vote was unanimous on that matter. Item two B, council discussed two threats of litigation. The first from attorney Corey Briggs dated December 21st of 2012. In response to that threat of litigation, the council has agreed to dock it an agenda item on January 16th to re-adopt, uh, the ordinance involving regional appointments. Uh, the second matter, item two B, uh, the second case involving a threat of litigation from attorney Mia Severson dated December 21st. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act on that item. Item three A, conference with real estate negotiator involving the center-city golf course property, negotiating party, city of Oceanside and Goat Hill Partners LLC. Under negotiations or price and terms for the lease of the property, uh, there is no reportable action on that item. Item three B, real estate negotiations involving the El Corazon property involving the city of Oceanside and the International Swimming Hall of Fame. Under negotiations or price and terms for the use of the recreational real property, uh, there's no reportable action on that item either.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Clerk, will take item number eight, please.
Item number eight is a joint meeting of the city council and the harbor board of directors. It is the, oh, I'm, OP, oh, OPFA. The authorization for the city manager to execute a commitment letter to the Compass Bank of Alabama for the sale and delivery of the 2013 certificates of participation in an amount not exceed 13 million and an interest rate not to exceed 2.5%.
Michelle, good evening.
Hello, happy new year, Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the city council. I'm Michelle Lynn, the Treasury Manager for the city of Oceanside. I'm here before you today to request, um, authorization for the city manager to execute a commitment letter from Compass Bank of Alabama related to the sale and delivery of, um, certificates of participation for the purpose of refunding the 2003 Series A certificates of participation. The original bonds in 2003, um, were issued as a refunding of a 1993 issue for the flood control projects, for the San Luis Rey flood control project, which were two bond issues issued in the late 80s and the downtown, um, parking project funds, uh, bond funds. Um, at that time, um, 25 million dollars were issued, and right now, we have 15.27 million dollars that remain outstanding. Um, the bonds are subject to non-call on, um, April 1st of 2013. And with the interest rates, um, where they are right now, in this exceptionally low, um, interest rate environment, we have the opportunity to refinance these bonds and, um, obtain significant savings for, um, on the debt service payments. And so what we're looking at right here is we will be issuing private placement bonds. Uh, we put out a bid, um, through Piper Jaffrey, which is, um, one of the, um, banking firms that is working on the deal. And, um, we got bids from four banks, and Compass Bank was the awarded bid. The, um, the indication on the bid summary was at an interest rate of 1.6%, which would bring savings, an annual savings of $592,000 a year, um, based on that 1.6%. The 1.6% rate is, um, indexed off a four-year LIBOR, um, at plus 103 basis points. So if we were to sign the commitment letter today, that would equate to 1.68% on rate, interest rate. What the terms of the new deal would be, we would have a 10-year bond, um, which is the remaining portion of the original 20-year bond. Um, it would be a non-callable bond, and, um, the one aspect of it is that with the original bonds in 2003, there was a, um, a reserve bond that was as security for the bonds in case of default on payment. Um, with private placement bonds, they're, they don't require reserves. Typically, the banks don't require reserves. Um, but because of the nature of these bonds, um, and any certificates of participation that will be issued in the future, um, we are required to pledge assets, essential assets of the city as security. And one of the reasons is, or the main reason is because of the filed bankruptcies by city, like the city of Stockton, because they have certificates of participation with non-essential assets pledged, such as the flood control channel and the flood control projects and the, um, downtown parking lots. And therefore, there isn't any recourse, um, by the bondholders if payment is not made. So what we are doing is we are pledging our fire stations, uh, 2 through 6 as security, and also we're pledging the, um, civic, or the 602 Civic Center, which is the code enforcement buildings, um, as security. And those properties have been appraised, and we have met the appraised value that's deemed appropriate for, um, what we're asking for is the loan. Um, so by signing the commitment letter, the bank puts up the commitment letter saying, yes, we will lend you the money based on these conditions, and then we authorize that we will commit to, um, take, you know, to issue the bonds based on those, um, conditions, and then the rate is locked in at 1.68% if we were to sign the letter, um, with, by the end of the week, because that's where the indicative rate is right now. So, um, with the staff report, it was at 160, and now we're, um, looking at a 1.68% interest rate, which is about 580, I would say 588,000 dollars annually in savings. Um, so basically, we're looking at a significant savings. So the, oh, another point is that, um, the source of funds, the payment of, on the debt right now is, 44% of it is from the general fund, 41% of it, it comes from the water operating fund, and, um, 15% comes from the CIP fund, which is the, um, San Luis Rey flood control channel water recourse, water course fund, sorry. And so the savings would be spread, um, proportionally based on the debt serving, debt, current debt service payments that are being had. And I have, um, bond counsel, Brian Forbath, from Stadoliaka, Crossman and Ralph, and Katie Costa, from Piper Jaffrey, if you have any questions directly, um, for them. Otherwise, that's my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Take a seat aside, Bob. Before you do that, could you have those people you identified stand up so I can see who they are? Of course. Ah, good-looking people on the back. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. City Manager, you have anything? Thank you very much. Got a clear one here. Councilmember Sanchez, well, excuse me, public on this?
No public.
Back to us. Councilmember Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we authorize city manager to execute the commitment letter to Compass Bank of Alabama for the sale and delivery of the 2013 certificates of participation in an amount not to exceed $13 million and an interest rate not to exceed 2.5 million, 2.5%. Excuse me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. With that, Councilmember Scheller.
Thank you. So more good news?
Yes.
We just, we just don't want to kill our fire departments. So we've got to pay these bills, right?
Right, exactly.
I think, I think that is good news for us, and thank you for always chasing down the best deal.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I'd be better off if they did the whole loan against the river, and then they can repossess the river, and we let them have it.
That would be true. I think we all would.
But the only, the question I have is the 602 Civic Center drive. I know at times, there's been some thought of sell, or reuse, or rebuilding. You know, that's an old YMCA building.
Correct.
Thing. So what happens if we, at some point in time, decide to sell that, and the bond counsel is working his way forward? So I imagine I'm asking a bond counsel question.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmember Kern. The answer is, is there are provisions underneath the documents to substitute a different facility in at that, at that point in time. Should the city decide they want to tear down or redo the YMCA building and not want it to be subject to the lease? You would at that point have to go to the bank for their consent. The bank is reasonable. If you were to put up an asset with a like amount of value, like sensuality, the odds are that they would accept that proposal, allow you to substitute that asset in, and then you could go and do what you need to do.
Okay.
But you would need the bank consent.
Well, I understand. I mean, they have a loan against this, like anything else. You'd have to go get their permission to take it out of the loan agreement or substituters. I just, I just wanted to-
We'll tie your hands, but you will-
I just didn't want us to say, okay, you can never do it until we have to go back and redo the whole agreement to change asset. We can swap the asset without redoing the agreement.
That's correct, yeah.
That's, that's the point I want to clarify, because I know the friends at the library will never let us get rid of that building.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to hear we have an opportunity to save some money. I just have a technical question. Why was LIBOR picked instead of a Fed funds rate, since LIBOR's been involved in some scandals recently in terms of its computation? And since the Fed is committed to keeping interest rates down for the foreseeable future, what made you decide to go in that direction?
That was the rate that was set forth, or the index that was set forth by Compass Bank. So they're, they're the, that was their index of choice, and that was, they proposed on the term sheet. I don't know if Katie can, point for that, yeah, elaborate on that.
Good evening. Katie Costa with Piper Jaffrey. Good evening. LIBOR is an index that is used quite frequently with any number of the banks. We did go out to eight separate banks to get bids, four of which determined that they did not want to bid. And of the four, I believe three of the four actually used a spread to LIBOR. And I believe that despite some of the conjectures that are occurring with LIBOR at this point in time, it's still very widely accepted as the index of choice with the banks.
Thank you. Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, number seven?
Item number seven, city council approval of plans and specifications for the grading of a portion of El Corazon pursuant to the El Corazon Reclamation Plan and authorization for the city engineer to call for bids.
Doug.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This item is an approval of plans and specifications. It has to do with the grading of the site for the temporary or multi-use athletic fields. You got me. So I need council to approve that and authorize the city engineer to go out to bid.
Thank you. Is there public on this?
No public.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Kern.
No approval.
Second.
Councilmember Sanchez. That's it, thank you. Another one? Okay, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I appreciate that. How many for public items?
Public items, we have two. Item number 15, we have two.
Okay, let's go with those, please.
Yes. First, we have Robert Spencer, and second, we have Brian Crew.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Fine, thank you. First of all, I want you to put, if I can ask you to put your Harbor District hat on for just a second.
Harbor District.
And I'd like you, I'd also like to thank all of you for your service. It's at trying times, and it's not easy to be a councilman and staff member. And I very much appreciate that sincerely. I have a couple of questions about the harbor. It's an off agenda item. One, hopefully it's a dead issue, but it may be dormant. I don't know. I know that in the past, there was discussion, discussion about outsourcing to a manager to run the harbor. And I'm under, the harbor is very near and dear to me because I live there. I'm under the philosophy that ain't broke, don't fix it. I think you guys are great stewards. I think that Frank Kwan is doing a very good job managing it. I don't think we need an extra buffer, if you're still considering it. I'd just like to voice my opposition. I've talked to a lot of slip and boat owners, a lot of business owners, a lot of residents. I'm not actually alone. We think your stewardship is very good the way it is. And I would not like another government entity to be buffering in between. And I don't know where it is. It could be, it could, issue could be moot at this point. I don't know. But my second concern is, just in the last month, at Thanksgiving time, you put a sign up, and you did some drilling along the harbor. And it was in, the sign said desolization project testing. Now, I know you said no to the inner-city agency project, or at least temporarily, on that project of desolization. My antenna goes up a bit. I don't understand why we would be drilling for testing of desolization if desolization was a potential activity that we're going to do. If that is the case, you need a lot of land to put that up. I see my light is on. Also, to pump it out. And I'm very, very concerned about that, and hopefully I'll get public knowledge on that. And also, the direction the council is on that concerns a lot of people, because that is a high use. We have a jewel in the harbor. We have a tremendous jewel that's used, that particularly the parking lot and all over there. And I'm not sure it's compatible use, if the end game is to put our own desolization project in. I don't know why we're testing it, if we're not considering it. Thank you.
These are items that are on the agenda, but I can have my city manager try to touch basis on a couple of issues.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, just real quick. In regards to the harbor outsourcing, we did, based on council's direction, solicit proposals to do that. We have received those proposals. We are in the process of evaluating them, and we hope to bring them back to you probably in March or April. We can certainly let Mr. Spencer know when that occurs and when that is scheduled. And in regards to the second, the city does have a desolization project that we're looking at. It would be inland, but we're looking at putting wells and bringing water in that is not out into the ocean. So we can certainly, and if you talk to Michelle in the back, we can give you a project description of which we have, that goes through that entire process of what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Your Honor, Councilmember Sanchez, my name is Brian Crew, former senior commissioner for the city of Oceanside. Last year, the senior commission mysteriously disappeared where we don't know. We don't have any representation at all of 40,000 senior residents of Oceanside, 300,000 seniors in San Diego County. And there are no programs that we can see or hear of that the council is discussing seniors, senior residents. And it's our feeling that maybe, say, council should consider putting the senior commission for the city of Oceanside back. We were volunteer. We didn't cuss the city one thin dime. And we need to represent every senior that who lives in the city of Oceanside, and veterans also. So we certainly need that program. So I will be happy to return at some future date to see how far a senior commission thoughts are as far as the city council is concerned. Your Honor?
Thank you, sir.
No further public.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you explain 16 that have been continued, in case people are here for it?
Yes. Item number 16 will not be heard this evening, but has been re-noticed for 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, January 16th.
Thank you very much. Item 17, when you get a chance?
Item 17, the city council consideration of zone amendment, amending articles 4, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 41 of the 1992 zoning ordinance to streamline the land entitlement permit process for certain land uses and permits that are low-risk and achieve a high level of compliance with conditions of approval, and to have this delegated by staff or approved by the city planner in order to expedite the processing time and requirements for future businesses and help foster economic development and introduction ordinance to effect these changes. Applicant to the Oceanside.
Thank you very much. As the mayor, I'll welcome this public hearing. Request disclosure from council members and constituent contacts?
Thank you. I've had contact with staff as well as some, some public.
Staff, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Staff members of the public?
No, staff and, staff and public. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, correspondence or petitions?
None.
Thank you very much. With that, Scott? There you go.
All right, there we go.
Good evening, Scott. Thank you.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale from the Planning Division, here to present agenda number 17 for the consideration of a zone amendment to articles 4, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 41 of the 1992 ordinance to streamline the entitlement process. The subject zoning text amendments to the 1992 zoning ordinance incorporate revisions to identify non-controversial amendments within each zoning district's use matrix table and provide a relatively simplistic administrative review process for certain uses. Also, we're amending Article 4 to allow weddings and animal and dog shows and training-type uses, and also wineries within the agriculture district with an administrative use permit approval. And also revising Article 41 to allow the city planner to defer to the planning commission for review if a proposed use generates any controversial issues or has negative impacts. Just to note that none of these proposed amendments apply to the coastal zone, so therefore no coastal commission review is necessary. The zone amendments, like I said before, will enable revisions to those, the articles that I mentioned. It'll also enable streamlined process and a limited review process for non-controversial use types within each zoning district. Little bit of background on why we're doing the streamlining process. The reasons we're doing the streamlining process began due to an efficiency study prepared back in 2009 by the Palo Alto-based Matrix Consulting Group. They did an analysis on the Development Service Department, and they identified a few land uses that were found to be non-controversial and somewhat timely and burdensome and costly for the applicants and the staff for review. For example, many uses in the ordinance require little to no review and are typically non-controversial exists within, with no, no negative impacts, but they currently require a conditional use permit and a six-month review rather than administrative process, which would be about a two-to-three-month process. Why are we doing this streamline? In response to the planning department review and also the Palo Alto Matrix study, we've identified uses that fit this category and have histories of non-controversy, and also we would require an administrative process to kind of streamline and, within the entitlement process. We would still require public notification. We'll notify everybody within 300 feet, so there still will be some public notification. And if the city planner wishes, or we find there's any controversy, the city planner can bring an administrative project up to the planning commission level. And if it does get appealed, we can also bring it up to the city council level. So there still is that discretion. Also, the Economic Development Commission Chairman and the Planning Commission Chair met with the city planner and Development Service Director and identified a relatively simplistic, non-controversial, the non-controversial uses that could be subject to limited review process by our planning division. And some of the implementation will basically, the streamlining ordinance will be implemented by this very process here, by the approval of the city council. The changes will entice more businesses to the city of Oceanside, and will reduce processing time for businesses and staff. The uses that have been reduced to CUP process, conditional use process, to an administrative process will be implemented in a shorter review process time, and will also reduce costs by $1,351. And as you can see by this table here, a conditional use permit costs about $4,500, which typically takes about four to six months for review. Some of the uses that are identified in the, in the attachments would be reverted to an administrative process, which would cost about $3,152, and less processing time, which would range two to three months. Some of the benefits of the, the streamlining is basically a cleaner and easier to follow ordinance, and also to reduce the processing time and costs for both the applicant and the city. And establish the non-controversial uses that require no questions and have little to no impacts in neighborhoods. Streamline code changes also allows the staff and the city planner to bring projects up forward to planning commission, like I mentioned before. With that, staff recommends that the city council approve, sorry, that's supposed to be city council, approve the streamlined code changes and adopt the resolution. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Have a seat at sidebar while we're looking.
And this is a public hearing, so any members of the public who wish to speak may sit at either of the podiums. We'd have three minutes to speak.
Now it's good evening. Mayday and Scott, I want to thank staff. It looks like they did a pretty thorough job of winnowing through the zoning code. I have two concerns I'm sure they can address later. One is ensuring fees get paid well before they get the stamp of approval from our planner, because we have the fee deferral. I want to make sure there's no mix-ups there. And the second thing is, your eTrakit system is a disaster. Is there any possible way you could have a list of all these types of administrative applications listed somewhere on the internet? Because eTrakit, it works sometimes, it doesn't work sometimes. It depends on which planner has entered the information. I'm assuming these would be in there, but I don't know, so maybe you can clarify those. Other than that, I'm supporting this.
I'm Chris.
Will you pull that mic down?
I'm sorry.
Pull the mic down to you.
Oh, okay. Grow taller. I'm Chris Woods. I'm on Wilshire Road in South Morrow Hills. I have Oceanside Equestrian Center, and recently started Beach City Dogs. And thank you for considering the amendment to the zoning to allow for the dog events. I think this will bring a lot of revenue to the city also with hotels and restaurants and shopping for people coming for dog events. I've installed a dock and the largest pool for dock diving. You've probably seen on TV the big new sport of dock diving dogs. And- And that draws a lot of attention and notoriety. And I have the largest pool in the United States on my ranch. So, and we have dog agility and I hope, as a side note, drawing in some of the companion service dogs for wounded warriors and canine companions to be able to incorporate them and to my business too. So, thank you for letting me speak and considering this amendment to the zoning.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I see no others, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and come back with the council. I had a quick question. There's a couple of questions asked by Nadine. I know you were talking at the time to the city manager. You can answer the questions. And do you want to repeat it again by Nadine?
Could you find it?
Nadine, could you repeat your two? Because they were busy talking to the city manager. I want you to make sure you get your questions answered.
One was a payment of development fees to make sure they're paid well in advance before they get the seal of approval. How are we ensuring that? The other one was suggesting that we, the E-Track-it system doesn't work for baloney and with these, I anticipate we're going to get a lot of these. And could there be a website just have a listing of these? Because I'm sure it's going to be a little quick application. Be nice just to have those up where you can see them. The E-Track-it does and does not work, it depends on which planner put the material in. So you're either looking at a map in Iowa or you might actually have the site and it's kind of a lot of work. So it'd be nice if we had a separate page just showing what these are because obviously they won't be controversial if no one knows about them. So I'm hoping we'll still have notice, we'll still have our public records notice for the specialist who wants to receive them. Other than that, I do support this. Staff did a good job. Thank you.
I understand the questions. And with respect to the issues that Ms. Scott raised, first, we are not changing, we're not proposing to change the notification process at all. Secondly, with respect to fees being paid, we don't take in an application unless the fees have been paid. And that ensures that, well, we just don't start work on it until we have the check in hand. It's part of the application process. With respect to E-Track-it, as much as the technology is working very well for us in many respects and the respect that Ms. Scott raised and being easily referenced and usable for the purposes that she's describing, the technology does have the capability of doing that and we can improve on that to make it easier to see which applications are in process, where they're at in terms of the review and when they would be scheduled or tentatively scheduled for public hearing. So we can improve on that as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll move on in a second. I have a quick question. Do you compare these rates and fee rates to other cities?
The fees that are being proposed, they were subject to council approval back in, I believe it was March of 2011. And at that point, we shared information that these fees are generally in keeping with the surrounding communities.
Thank you. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you very much. With that, council member, Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of these have been specifically requested, especially those in the agricultural, ag lands, and that I really do appreciate. However, some others, I think, perhaps reflect some of the loss that we've had in the planning department with respect to history with the city and what has been controversial in our city. So it was interesting to see that this list, the attempt here was to list non-controversial plans because about half of these, you know, in the time that I've been a council member and also before, highly controversial. Depends on, in my own neighborhood, Eastside, many of these have been highly controversial and a lot of people have gone to, to these, to meetings. And I'm concerned about making, I'm concerned that, that we not leave out the public. And I understand on, for example, Section 4104, it says something about a time period for someone from the public being able to go to the planner and say, well, you know, I have some concerns about this. And the planner then setting it for a, a, a regular meeting for the planning commission. It says 10 days. I want that to be 10 business days. Because, you know, otherwise, you know, there's just no way people will be able to get enough information to know where to go. That notice should say who they need to contact, by the way. A good number, not one, you know, I don't want to get complaints that, well, I called the number but nobody, you know, either nobody responded or, yeah, I got a call but then nothing happened. I want to make sure that there is, that there's a definite process for having the community be able to contact whoever the city planner or city planner's office or whatever, whatever that clerk or whatever that process is going to be, that it be very easy for someone to be able to do that and also that there's not going to be some kind of falling off. You know, as I said, the ag, great. I really appreciate the, the wineries, the, the bed and breakfast, the weddings that we were talking about, also the, you know, the animal training and, and, you know, I know we've gotten requests for, for horses and stuff like that. But the things that, that I, I recall just not too long ago, I guess, 12 years is, is a long time to be on the council, but childcare, religious assembly, residential care, I mean, that residential care facility out in Jeffrey's Ranch, that was a big, a school, public or private, you know, big controversy. Depending on what is being proposed, a drive-through, there was a huge, you know, concern about it from Eastside regarding the drive-through. Just, you know, some of these things, I'm, I'm surprised that we're here and I think that I would have liked to have had a workshop to really go through these, this whole huge list. And, you know, I'd hate to, you know, put this huge list, very inclusive list, and then later on start taking them off. I would have preferred to, had been, been more concerned about public ability to have their say on projects coming to, especially since this is going to impact residential. It's, besides, you know, ag, I mean, I'd see ag, great, wonderful, I'm really happy about that, but the other stuff I'm concerned about. So I want to make sure that, that those 10 days are business days so that people have the time and ability to contact their neighbors, find out from, you know, I do, I would hate to have an appeal and then not have staff be able to talk to that person and maybe there's no reason for an appeal. So 10 business days, to me, makes sense that people will have a chance to figure out what the heck is going on in their neighborhood. It's been reduced from, how many, how many feet was that, Nadine?
1,500.
1,500 down to 300. So there's going to be, people are going to, hey, did you hear about this? Or people are not going to hear about this. They're going to, they're going to find out very last second and that's why we need 10 business days. Otherwise, we're going to have some very, very angry people. And once that project is approved, there's no going back. So I want to make sure that we have that, that, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about the over inclusiveness of this list, but if we at least have those 10 business days, I think a lot of these things are going to end up being heard by the planning commission. Thanks.
House, may I look at?
Thank you. I, I'm going to move approval of this. I hopefully will incorporate the 10 business days issue in there. That does, that's not a big deal, right? We can put that in there without any major changes when it comes back. We'll just put business.
Just for clarity of the record here, the 10 working days would appear in Section 4104D 1 and 2. That's what the notice requirements are for these types of decisions. So we could add that to the text of 4104 without reintroducing this.
Okay, well, I guess it's, the lawyers speak, working day, business days, aren't they the same? Or are they?
Well, if you look up in Section 4104, see, it references the term working days right now for time for the administration, administrative decision.
Clarification, we'll make sure the business day thing is addressed.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to move approval of this. Yeah, I, I think in the agricultural zone, this is going to be a big boom. You know, the idea that, you know, Paradise Gardens especially, I mean, that's a, an area out there that they do a lot of receptions. In fact, my son got married out there. So the idea that, I, I think that's helpful in the winery issue, I think in the tastings and things like that, I think that's maybe the savior of the agricultural district is wineries with the use of water and things like that. And I can see them converting more and more to wineries than versus other type of crops that require more water. So with that, so like I said, I'm going to move approval that we do the zone amendment and amend Articles 4, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 41 of the 1992 zoning ordinance for streamlined entitlement process for certain uses by administrative review and establishing the amended text as part of the implement document of 1992 zoning ordinance and streamline the code change and make sure we have the business days in there.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Feller, please.
Thank you. Does this affect planning commission then? Because the planning commission, they have 10 days to appeal. So is that, are we changing? It's not 10 working days in the planning commission, it's 10 days? Anybody?
I don't think there's any changes proposed for that, for the time period to appeal from planning commission decisions to council, if that's your question.
Okay, so, I mean, if, and I did want to say that the planning commission has heard this and they didn't make any, the, the changes that they recommended or talked about are incorporated?
Yes, they are.
Does this take effect immediately? 30 days?
It's 30 days after the second reading, after the adoption.
Well, hurry up. And I would say that we can only hope we get a lot of these applications. That will mean the economy probably turning around. One thing that I always would, I mean, I always hope we're trying to improve on is, is the fact that all the planners are on the same page. The streamlining becomes a matter of how can we help you, Mr. Customer, and, and get these things done in, in less time as opposed to, you know, all the, the extra coming back for, if it gets a different planner. I just hope we're looking at all of those kinds of things with each, with each application. So I know Steve Hasty out at Paradise Gardens is going to really be happy about this and so I'm glad to approve this.
Thank you. Please, look. Excuse me, read it in place, I just asked you that.
Okay, so this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Articles 4, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 41 of the 1992 zoning ordinance with the addition of the term working days to Section 4104D 1 and 2.
Thank you. Please, look.
Motion approved, 5-0. Motion is approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, a 2 to 5 minute break, please. If you haven't been there before, out the door upstairs, water and restrooms. Quick, light break, please. 18.
Item number 18. City council, consideration of an appeal of planning commission resolution number 2012 P49 approving development plan, regular coastal permit and tentative parcel map for the demolition of three residential units, construction of a three-story duplex, and establishment of a two condominium residential units on a single lot at 1513 South Pacific Street, and adoption of a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission decision approving the project. Bert.
Thank you very much. As the mayor, open this public hearing, request disclosures and constituent contacts.
Are we going to, I mean, I assume, I've had contact with the staff, with, with the developer and the owners. And I've been on the site several times in the four years that it's been on the books.
I visited the site, I've spoken with the applicant, spoken with staff and...
Staff, developer?
No contact.
I'm there with the applicant, applicant representative, and staff.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, correspondence or petitions?
None.
Thank you very much. Amy, good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is an appeal submitted by the project proponent, Mr. Chris Burgess. The appellant cites three issues in his appeal letter. Two of the issues relate to the planning commission's conditions of approval. The third item is a request for findings to be added to the staff report and/or a resolution regarding the projects revetment. At this point, we're uncertain whether the applicant wishes to pull the item related to the string line setback. I do have a presentation prepared that, and I can move forward with that, but I'm not certain if the applicant at this point wishes to continue with the presentation on the string line issue. If we can get some clarification, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. In, in late conversations with the applicant and the applicant's engineer, the applicant has opted to withdraw the portion of appeal that relates to the specific location of the string line. In recognition of information that was provided to staff subsequent to the preparation of the staff report before you this evening, as well as information that has been coming into us as a result of dialogue between the city engineer and the project applicant, or project engineer and the applicant, staff is, again, dedicated to working with the applicant in, and working with the coastal commission in defining the precise string line location as it extends across this property. Because of this late information that was presented to staff, we have committed to placing a memorandum in the project file that indicates that the exhibit that is in front of the city council at this point may not represent the precise location of the string line. However, it is, it is subject to additional conversation with the city's surveyor that we have working on this project and with coastal staff. And with that understanding, the applicant has agreed to, again, withdraw that portion of the appeal.
He doesn't want to continue this whole item?
No, that's just, it's just one point of, one point of the appeal and that is the, the location of the string line. The items that are continuing in the, in the appeal as outlined by Ms. Fasekis are the, whether or not it would be appropriate for development to extend beyond the string line and then also the, the planning commission's condition for the removal of the rooftop trellis.
Thank you, sir.
Moving forward then with item 2, that is part of the appeal, the planning commission condition under consideration is condition 9. Condition 9 requires the removal of a rooftop trellis which is proposed on top of the third floor of the proposed structure reaching a height of 40 and 1/2 feet. The last item regarding the revetment findings has been determined that it's not an appealable item since it does not relate to any project development standard or conditions. I'm going to give another view of the project so you have context for the project that it's being proposed. The Burgess-Jernigan residences site is located on the west side, side of South Pacific Street. It's on a coastal bluff, you know, within the South Oceanside neighborhood. Designing for the site is residential tours and existing development on the site includes three units, triplex development, one and two-story. The, the slides to the right identify the existing development on the site. The upper right-hand corner shows the, the two-story duplex that exists along South Pacific Street at this point. There's a smaller bungalow, single-family detached home, approximately 800 square feet that exists along the westerly portion of the site. And again, the location of the site is then is highlighted here. And again, the location of the site is then is highlighted here. It's located approximately 90 feet south of Buccaneer Beach, and it's surrounded by residential tourist zone properties, with the exception of Buccaneer Park, which is located almost right across the street into the east. Proposed improvements include the demolition of the existing three units and construction of a three-story duplex. The proposed project is shown on the exhibits that are before you. As you see, it does take advantage of the three-story, 35-foot maximum height that is allowed within the district, and the structure also provides some projections, seven feet that are approximately seven feet west of the existing single-family dwelling, and with the balconies extending up to 11 feet west of the existing single-family dwelling. The beachfront context is shown here. To the right, you see the condominium project to the immediate south, single-family bungalow type of development to the north, and newer two-story, single-family dwelling on the lot that is immediately to the south of Buccaneer Beach. Building elevations identify the extent of the development. It is a three-story, however, the lower level has been committed to common use for the other two condominium units on the second and third floor. A utility room, stairwell, and storage area is proposed on the fourth level. The, there is a trellis that it's under consideration under this appeal, extends from the edge of that utility room stairwell to the edge of the existing parapet. It's not shown on this drawing, but it is intended to be there, and the applicant is proposing to construct it at that location. Floor plans, real quickly, include approximately 23, 2,350 square feet on each level with 1,400 square feet of living space on the lower level. There will be two car garages in the tandem configuration to serve the proposed development. As I'm going through this, I'm trying to look and see what would be applicable considering that the string line issue has been deleted from the appeal process. The location of the trellis, again, will be, or is proposed to be, extending from the utility room to the, to the parapet that it's identified here. The Planning Commission's condition required its removal in compliance with the maximum permitted height provisions in our zoning ordinance. The proposed trellis is approximately 25 by 15 feet, and it's attached to the utility room on the uppermost level. I pointed out the location on the east and west elevations as well, so you can see the extent of it on the uppermost floor on these elevations. Building height, as I mentioned earlier, is limited to 35 feet unless the conditional use permit is issued in accordance with Article 15 of our zoning ordinance. There are provisions in our zoning ordinance that allow for exceeding that maximum height for utility-type of structures or for architectural appendices such as skylights, towers, church steeples, et cetera. The proposed structure does not serve neither utility type or purpose. The portion that does, the stairwell and utility storage area, would be excluded and would fall under this provision, but the proposed trellis does not, and as it will serve to support the deck space that it's proposed on the uppermost floor, therefore, this provision does not apply, and based on that, the Planning Commission required its removal. Appeal item number three is for the addition of revetment findings. As I mentioned during my introduction to this item, this has been determined to be a non-appealable item, as this request does not relate to any project development standard or condition of project approval. Nevertheless, with regard to findings and conditions related to the revetment and compliance with our current code, staff has included in the Planning Commission Resolution of Project Approval conditions that pertain to maintenance and references in the staff report to the Planning Commission that address issues and findings of revetment. Staff recommends that the appeal of the Planning Commission Resolutions 2012-P49 is denied based upon the conclusion that the conditions of approval that had been challenged by the applicant are necessary and appropriate in order for the project to conform with the local coastal plan. The project as conditioned by the Planning Commission is consistent with the requirements of our zoning ordinance, the land use policies of the general plan, and the policies of the LCP. Staff's recommendation is that the commission, the coastal, the City Council deny the appeal and affirm the conditional approval of coastal permit 11-02, parcel map 12-02, and development plan 12-15. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy. I have a seat sidebar, please. Mr. Clerk.
Now it's time for the appellant to speak. You have a total of 20 minutes for presentation and rebuttal.
Sure. If he puts up and down there, they'll turn it on.
Yep.
Could you move it again for the enlargement? It changed a little bit. Thank you, I appreciate it.
My name is Chris Burgess, residing at 1513 South Pacific. Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for hearing this appeal tonight. We have owned this property since 1965 and have been anxious to getting this project going. It's been, we're into the fourth year of this process. I first want to concur with the statements made earlier by George and Amy about the agreement with determining what the string line, where the string line location is gonna be, so we're removing that portion only, so I just want to confirm that for the record. I do want to also address one other section of the appeal, which was not known to staff, is we're removing the appeal portion regarding the rooftop trellis from this appeal. There is still a portion of the appeal that we are very interested in and has an important aspect to the design of the building, and that relates to Section 1703, Section E of the 1986 zoning ordinance, which is on the screen now. If we can focus on the portion, I'm gonna read it for the record. Pertinences such as open decks, patios, and balconies may be allowed to extend seaward of the string line setback line, providing that they do not substantially impair the views of adjoining properties. I guess what comes into interpretation is that substantially impairs the views. Apparently, it's staff's position that our project substantially impairs the views of the neighbors. We have letters from neighbors that was submitted at the Planning Commission level, that, letters on both the neighbors to the north and neighbors to the south, that they have no problem with that portion and does not impair their views, and those have been put on file with the, with staff, so they have no objections to it. But apparently, staff in their report to, tonight, indicated that this particular section of the 1703 prohibits seaward extensions, so they're starting off with saying that it prohibits it. It does not. It clearly states that it allows it unless there is substantial impairment based on neighbors. We find no basis in that, in that determination on staff's part, so we certainly come before you tonight to, wherever that, that string line issue is determined, that, that we'd be allowed to build balconies beyond the string line, even though staff does not want us to, they didn't take that up very clearly tonight, but we want to bring that up as a very important issue. So we ask for your, your vote on that section of the appeal towards allowing that, the balconies to extend seaward of the string line. To just further, just to give you a view of our particular project, this is a view from our process, of our project that, this is looking north, so we have structures that are directly to north that are farther out than our project, so even with, even with a balcony extending beyond the string line would not impair, or impair their view, and then also views to the south. Once again, we already have a structure that, even with their decks, stick out farther than what this, what we determined to be the string line for the property directly to the south. So we're not encumbering, we're not going beyond what other structures are, we're just going to the level of the structures, and that we just be allowed to have those, the string line, and then, based on our calculations, the decks going beyond the string line would only be approximately three to four feet. There was an indication, I think, maybe that Amy mentioned was seven feet. It's only going potentially three to four feet at most beyond the string line. So if there's any other questions, that ends my portion of the discussion. Thank you.
So now it's time for any public to come forward and speak in this matter, if you'd have the opportunity, three minutes. Come to the podium if you'd like.
My name is Renee Elman, and I am brand new to Oceanside and fairly new to California also. I just wanted to voice my concern of this project. I just purchased a unit directly south of this property, and I have a great view of the beach, the surf, and the ocean from my kitchen window and my master bedroom window, and this construction will totally block my view and it'll reduce the value of my property. I wish I would have known before that this was gonna happen. I know it's probably too late to do anything about it, but I did want to voice my concern. So, thank you.
Hello, Robert Spencer. I didn't go like deputy mayor or the two other councilmen to the property, so I'm, speaking in general, it is not specifics at all, but I am a beach property owner and I love views, and I, I'm concerned, I love, I respect property owners' rights. I think they should be able to do what an individual property owner wants to do with their property, except when it comes to the overall views along our coasts. Many property owners buy in expectation of having that view, and whenever you go up, you're gonna block somebody else's view that they've already had, and the competing of going up, 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 one property owner's protected and the other one's infringed. And the property owners definitely have a vested interest, both the neighbor and the builder themselves. I don't see a vested interest in the Planning Commission. I think of them as being your staff, your arbitrator, your person that you have picked, and I definitely respect their recommendation. Just a general observation. Thank you.
I'm Casey Jernigan, I'm the Jernigan part of the Burgess-Jernigan. As Chris said, my father bought that house 45 years ago, and ever since he had it, the whole idea was about family, and I've enjoyed it down there, my children enjoy it down there, and Lord willing, my grandchildren will enjoy it down there someday. My comments are basically dealing with the aesthetics of what we built. If you saw the older house, it's small, which some people refer to it as a beach shack, and I wish I could tell you the number of people that have stopped in front of our house and said, "My gosh, this is what the beach is all about. This is a great old place." And frankly, if I had my decision, we wouldn't do, you know, tear it down, but that, that can't be. The family's grown, we need the room. What we have tried to do with the aesthetics of the house is maintain somewhat of a beach-type feel, and somewhat of a cozy, you know, as much as you can make it cozy, and for our family. One of the things, and not to knock any of the other structures, because I love the, kind of, the aesthetics of the beach and kind of the different types of housing, but there are a lot of stucco boxes built straight up with no personality, just flat boxes. We've tried to give the house some dimension. That's one of the reasons we cut the house back three feet, so that we could extend the balconies, but we cut it back three feet to give it some dimension. Frankly, when you see the pictures, I mean, that, to take the balconies out of that would change the whole look of it, and I think damaged the look of the Long Beach there. So, from that standpoint, the other thing is, you know, we've been at this four years or so, the code has always been, as you saw, Chris pointed out, that we were able to build beyond the string line. We've taken that all the way through, and then, you know, fairly recently, it comes up, "Oh, you can't do that, can't do it," even though we've done it by code. So I just, you know, I don't want to knock the system at all, but it just doesn't seem fair for us to put all this time and money into it, only to find out at the last minute that, "Oh, no, that code is not right," or they have the, you know, the ability to change the code on us at the last minute. So, that's all. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on the side, I may step forward.
Mr. Clerk, I see none. I'll go and close the public hearing.
For rebuttal, Mr. Burgess has 15.
Rebuttal, I'm sorry, yes, quick. I'm sorry, I closed it early without rebuttal. You still have rebuttal time. I'll close the public hearing, then come back to the council. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be first clear. The staff report has three bases, bases for the appeal, and what I understand is, what I had understood from staff's presentation is that item number one has been resolved in that there's gonna be some ongoing discussion with coastal staff, and therefore, what is really before us, before us is the item two, and that item three is not really before us because that's not really an appealable point. So, we're only focused on the trellis, is that correct?
Just for a clarification, item one, we have been in communication with coastal staff. We'll continue, at this point, to work with coastal staff on this to further clarify. We've received some direction from them. As far as item three, from the applicant's presentation, I understand that they're not objecting to our position on it. Item two is still under consideration. The only other issue that has been raised, which we understood in the brief discussion that we've had right before the meeting with the applicant, was that the string line issue would not be considered this evening. However, there were some issues that relate to the string line that were brought up as part of the applicant's presentation that had to do with the balconies, and to the extent that we've been asked to consider that item, our presentation was incomplete.
Okay, perhaps... Okay, so, I'll finish up. Okay.
More important minds got together, and apparently we're gonna ask for a continuance, is that correct? Would you please... Would you please, Mr. City Manager?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, given some of the ambiguities that you've heard tonight and the lack of specific location of the string line, I would recommend that you continue this item.
Date certain, please.
Next council meeting, or? No, it has to be date certain.
January 31st, or you'd be at coastal?
30th, it's the 30th.
If I can interject, the city, the city engineer will lead, will need up to 30 days to resolve this issue. First internally, and secondarily, we want to make sure we have concurrence with the coastal staff. So that, we anticipate that to be at minimum a 30-day period.
February.
Jeez, that, you couldn't do it by 30th of this month? Because then we don't have anything until the 27th of February, that's 60 days.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of worked backwards, and we're not comfortable committing to anything less than 30 days.
February 27th, the only one?
It's February 27th, the only meeting in February? Okay.
A question of the city attorney and you, if you come to a mutual agreement before that period of time, it could just happen, or does it have to come back to us?
I think what staff is asking, this is a staff request for a continuance. If we do it to a date certain, we don't need to re-notice the public hearing. If, if there's an agreement, it still needs to come back and be approved by the city council. Or if there's no agreement, then we need to make a decision on the appeal.
Okay.
Under the circumstances, here's the 27th of February, first we can do it. Mr. City Manager, is that confirmed with you and your stance?
Uh, yes, and the only other thing I would offer as an option is that, that we would schedule it for the January 30th meeting, and then if we haven't resolved it, we then we continue it a second time, but that puts some pressure on us to try to get it resolved.
We need a motion and a second for that.
I, I move that we continue to, continue this item to February 20, is it the 7th? Regular council meeting date.
I would say 20.
We have no way of having a meeting certain before that.
Well, not past the 30 days.
Your only meeting in February is the 27th. So you have January 30th, and the next meeting that you have is February 27th.
They need at least 30 days or more, so it's February 27th.
28 days.
Okay.
We have to vote on it, don't we?
Well, okay, look, I, I would just, well, are you gonna open the floor of a discussion, Mr. Mayor, or we?
Well, discussion with the council.
The discussion on the motion.
Yes, there's a motion, there's discussion, and I think you can go ahead, sir, and talk about it. We always want to make sure that everybody can try to be here, and if they want 30 days, you're gonna have to go into February.
Okay. You had the floor last, or you still have, you still?
I, yeah, I had the floor, but in light of the request for continuance, I'm changing my, you know, so that we can get this resolved. Because I think that, once it's resolved and there's no appeal to the, to the coastal commission, it cuts down a lot of time. So, I think the next, February 27th, is that fine with you, sir? I know you'd like it sooner, but, right, but there's no coastal meeting, and probably whatever happens here will be, if, if, right now there is no information regarding where the string line is. And therefore, this issue cannot be resolved today. So, I mean, you, you know, if you, if you don't want a continuance, the staff is recommending a continuance. So, you'll have to come, come to the podium.
I'll open the mic, because we can't hear you, and it doesn't go on the record.
And, and the public hearing is closed, so I'm gonna have to ask you, you'll, you'll have to respond to my question, which is, is, staff is recommending that we continue this item in order to be able to resolve this. Is, is that, is that okay with you?
Well, preferably not. My only question is, because we did talk a little bit about it, and since I'm off the record, I'll say this, they said there's a chance they'll get it done sooner. And my only thing is, if they can get it done in 15 days, can we get on to January 30th? Or whatever that January date is. That's all I'm asking. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
If they get it done soon.
Thank you very much. So, I think we are talking, we all are in agreement in terms of the continuance, the, the, what, we're not in agreement as, or at least there's no consensus as to how, how much time. Staff is requesting 30 days, which, I guess today is the 2nd, so the 30th?
Today's the 2nd.
Would be close to the 30 days. Is staff able to, does staff believe that they can back, can come back on the 30th? Is that the next, last Wednesday? Yeah, the last Wednesday's 30th.
There is a possibility that we can be ready to go by the 30th.
Mayor and council, one of the things you could do then is just continue it to the 30th, and if it's, if it requires for whatever reason, future continuance, then you could do it on that date. Then you wouldn't have to re-notice the public hearing, you'd save the applicant the expense of doing that.
Okay, but as you know, coastal, coastal staff, whenever there is a commission meeting because the, the, we have, because of all the vacancies, they're not gonna be able to respond till after next week. As long as you know that, okay.
We, we've actually already initiated conversation with coastal staff, they're aware of some of the issues, not the details of, of the, of the issue, but we are prepared. We have initiated the conversation, and we, we can remain hopeful that we could resolve this and be back here by the 30th of this month.
Okay. So in light of that, I'm gonna change my motion and withdraw basically from February 27th to January 30th.
Thank you, before I get a second, there's other speakers on that, I'll make a second for the attendant with that, we have other speakers. I'm gonna, I know you want to talk, Mr. Feller, but I got Mr. Fellain first, then you.
Actually, I was just gonna suggest the very thing we just agreed to, so I'm.
Thank you, Councilmember Feller, please.
I, as well, suggested that to the, the city attorney, but, you know, that doesn't mean that, I hope we're very diligent about contact with them, so that, you know, the sooner that we get this done, the better. I, I, I just think that it would be great to not have to worry about another month of this, after this, so, thank you.
Councilmember Karen?
Thank you, I, I just, one, I know we've had discussions primarily, are we just looking for methodology? We're not actually looking for surveying a string line? I mean, if that's the case, it's really gonna.
Uh, as far as the input from the coastal commission, is your question related to concurrence?
Yeah, we're looking for the methodology of establishing a string line, so everybody can agree.
I, I don't believe that we're looking for the methodology for establishing the string line to concur on the issue of where the string line is. I think it's more a matter of what the intent was, since the string line is a line on an aerial photograph. And now that the coastal commission staff has data that was, that was missing from our files for almost a decade or more, it should be easier to make that determination.
Well, I'm gonna translate easier and to quicker, so I, so I'm gonna agree with the 30-day, the January 30th date.
Sounds good, we'll have a motion on that and vote on, I'll tell you this, ladies and gentlemen, the string line issue has come up in the past, and it's a very hot issue for the coastal commission and staff, so I don't want to step on toes at coastal. So, 30th, if it doesn't, we'll probably have to have another continuance. So with that in mind, please vote.
Motion to perude 5-0.
Thank you, I guess they, we'll address it later. Thank you, folks, for being here, and I apologize for the time and the delay. With that, Mr. Clerk, item 19.
Item 19, request by Councilmember Fellain to remove Mayor Jim Wood as City of Oceanside primary Sandag board member.
Mr. Fellain.
Thank you, Mayor. As a way of an introduction, last year, we had a charter workshop on items, basically with a list of suggestions for people to consider to improve our city charter. One of the items I put on there to see if there was any public support, was whether or not the mayor, by being in a separately elected position, should automatically be assumed to be the Sandag rep. And not one person spoke in favor of that item. Now, I don't believe that represented any, anything against the current mayor, but was just the public attitude towards having, whether we have a weak mayor form of government or a strong mayor form of government. And so with that in mind, I believe that we need to have a Sandag representative that supports the majority view of the city when it comes to supporting infrastructure projects that improve the needs of our city. Probably the most critical and devastating disappointment in the last several years was the destruction of our Rancho Del Oro interchange. And that symbolizes in my mind the mayor's attitude towards infrastructure and job-creating growth that results from having infrastructure. When that decision was made, we lost $2 million in federal funding to design the interchange, we lost 50 to 80 million dollars in Sandag funding to complete that interchange. That decision broke a promise to the business community, specifically to the Ocean Ranch Business Park located in the center of the city, whose viability was dependent upon having access to our freeways. The Rancho Del Oro interchange was the critical link in that access. And unfortunately, this has, you know, contributed to Oceanside having the lowest jobs-to-housing ratio, if not the lowest, amongst the lowest in San Diego County. Other critical infrastructure projects included the Melrose Extension. Once again, that's a regional project that's important for the regional traffic flow that we all benefit from, because some people from out of town drive on our city streets, this is, I'm sure everyone in the City of Oceanside drives on city streets in other cities. And it's something where we all need to work together to do our share to improve our regional road structure. Anyone who's stuck on traffic on El Camino Real and College Boulevard understands the needs for these critical, these types of critical infrastructure projects. I don't believe the mayor shares those views. We also saw recently with, when I-5 interchange, the expansion was revised, and suddenly $800 million was freed up, and the mayor voted to send that money south, while other North County representatives fought to look at projects here in North County. Now to give you an example of where we're at here, you know, if you drive out on Highway 76 out to the 15, we see they're expanding the bridge out there, a whole second extension is being added. And yet, is anyone seriously gonna tell me the 76 and 15 connection has more traffic than the 78 and I-5 connection, which is to my knowledge the only location in the state of California where traffic on a interchange is controlled by a traffic signal? And yet, you know, so we need someone who's gonna be down at Sandag fighting for these kinds of important infrastructure improvements and trying to convey a message so that Sandag understands, you know, the types of improvements we need down here. And so, we just had an election, and the voters returned to power, a majority on this council, three votes that support these type of projects. I believe it's fair and reasonable to ask that we have representatives on regional bodies that support the view of the majority, not the view of the minority. And I think related to this, of course, is that the primary representative also gets to participate in appointing other council members to subcommittees. We need a representative who's gonna appoint members to subcommittees who believe in infrastructure, not who are opposed to infrastructure. And so with that in mind, unfortunately, I believe the mayor in opposing some of these projects is primarily pandering to no-growth NIMBYs, and in this recession that goes on and on and on, and with California losing jobs almost daily, and losing businesses almost daily to other locations within the country that are more competitive, that have a greater understanding of how infrastructure relates to job growth, we need a representative who shares those views. And so unfortunately, because we just simply gonna have to agree to disagree on this issue, I felt compelled to call for this vote, so that we can have a representative that's more in line with the majority. Now, I would also, tangentially related to this, of course, is the mayor's overall appointment authority. And to date, you know, the mayor's not brought forward his list of appointments on what he believes, you know, is a reasonable compromise based on the distribution of power and the recent election results on this body. So I would certainly encourage the mayor to bring forward, to schedule an agenda item, to bring forward his list of proposed appointments for the next meeting, so that we can resolve the remaining issues. Because while we are debating an ordinance that I proposed, even with regional appointments, the old ordinance is still in effect. And so the mayor certainly has it within his authority to bring forward his list, so that we can see what his ideas of a compromise are, and what reasonable negotiation is, and, you know, resolve those other issues. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to remove Mayor Wood as the primary Sandag board member.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, thank you. Public?
Yes, we have 10 public members wishing to speak, you may come to the podium in the following order. First, we have Robert Spencer. Second, we have Yvonne Fox. Third, we have Linda Wallshop.
Ladies and gentlemen, you have to fill out a little slip in order to speak on this one, it's not a public hearing. If you want to, you have to turn it in.
Again, good evening, good evening. I'm not gonna get into name-calling, I'm not gonna get into the merits of whether he's a good representative or a poor representative. I'm gonna try, as a very naive, idealistic taxpayer, to see if I can come up with an out-of-the-box solution. So I'm gonna give it a shot. And I'd really like to, you know, most of my attention to Deputy Mayor Feller and to City Attorney Mullen. The, I'm gonna ask that you table this for the following reason. I would like to see if the two sides could get together with Mr. Mullen. I believe he's in a very, very difficult position. He mentioned a couple of meetings ago that he felt that this was a legal move. He felt that this was a, a legal, you know, thing within the charter. There seems, I don't know if he's 100% certain, 95, when you get thrown into the court system, litigation muddies the waters. I believe it's a very difficult position you're putting him in. He's having to solve, and he's having to render a, a position that is split amongst the council. I would love to see him find an outside objective person before you spend my taxpayers' dollars defending a potential lawsuit. Also, keeping the community split, I would love to have an outside counsel that doesn't have ties here to take a look at the charter, take a look at the proposed resolution by Councilmember Fellain, and render an objective opinion. And I, I believe that the cost of the community is tremendous, not just dollars and cents, but acrimony, discord, name-calling, all of that. And I believe we might be able to reach a more amicable situation if we have an objective third party. I don't know if this is the area of expertise that the city attorney has, I don't, I'm trying to empathize with him, I don't know how uncomfortable you are in this situation, but I can imagine it's not a fun position to be in at this point. And I would love to have an objective third party reach, you know, even if it's just a consultation for a few hours, let both sides do a brief, or give them the documents, let them sort through, and see if there is, if you're completely 100% within the realm of legal things, then go ahead and proceed. But if there's some doubt, I'd hate to, I mean, there's so many good projects for my tax dollars to go to, besides the lawyers just getting fat.
Need to wind it down, Tyler.
And, and to the last comment, usually in these kinds of cases, if they get to litigation, the deep pocket pays the lawyer's fees, and they resolve, even if you, even if the Oceanside council prevails, there's a very good chance you're gonna end up paying all the legal fees anyway, if you look at past precedents.
Mr. Feller, that's a question, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Yvonne Fox and I reside at 1947 Westview Road, Fallbrook, California. I own a home, uh, down on South Myers and I recently purchased a home in Rancho del Oro and will become a resident of the city of Oceanside. And I have been a resident for the city of Oceanside in the past for many years. I'm here to support and applaud the council in the direction that it's going. I'm a civil engineer. I understand traffic. I know major corridors. I know how traffic moves. I really would like to see an advocate, strong representation on Sand Egg in order for us to get the funding that we need. City of Oceanside, I think, is, and I've made major investments here, is one of the best cities, I think, in San Diego. Unfortunately, it's not reflected in the prosperity as we see in other cities. When you look at our harbor, our pier, our transit center, our airport, our beaches, and the central hub location of I-5, I-78, Highway 76, we should far exceed Carlsbad, Encinitas, and our property values and our prosperity. That is not the case. We're probably one of the lowest-valued cities, but I think it's one of the best cities. And with proper leadership and an advocate to go after those monies, I think we can do it. I think Supervisor Horn has inspired a lot of the cities with prosperity on purpose. And I think using that power to go against the city of San Diego, to try to get some of that funding, is a key element of progress that can be made here in North County, to create circulation for roadways. And I think having a strong advocate on that Sand Egg Board is very, very important. I really think that being good stewards of the city of Oceanside, I think Gary Feller, uh, Councilman Feller, really presented a good argument as to what has occurred. And when you look at that interchange at Rancho del Oro, that is foolish, foolish council that eliminated that and put that medical center there so that no future council could complete that interchange. Appears now we can only do the south, but we at least need to do that. We've got too much traffic on College. You're going to need it for El Corazon in order to get people up Rancho del Oro. It's the only way this city is going to function properly or we're going to continue to have tremendous amount of traffic on College. It's not a good situation and it needs to be rectified. I think the direction the council's going is a good direction. I support you. Thank you.
Good evening. Linda Walshow, 151 Robbie Lang. I'm also the Vice President of Action and I'm speaking on behalf of some of our board members. On November 6th, Oceanside voters overwhelmingly re-elected Mayor Wood by 54.16% of the vote. The office of mayor ordinarily performs two functions that other council members do not. Number one, the mayor can make appointments to local and regional boards and commissions. And two, the mayor presides over council meetings and ceremonial functions such as issuing awards and et cetera. On December 12th, the very day Mayor Wood was being sworn in for his third term of office, Messrs. Kern, Feller, and Feller voted in their new city ordinance, stripping the mayor of his powers of office and transferring those powers to themselves. Mr. Feller has made it clear that despite what voters determined, he intends to make the mayor's office a ceremonial position and enforce the will of three men over the people of Oceanside in spite of the election results to the contrary. In a news article on December 28th, Mr. Feller was quoted as saying, "The mayor needs to understand he's part of the minority, not the majority." Mr. Feller apparently needs to be reminded that it is the voters of Oceanside who are the majority, not the three, these three councilmen. The voters made their choice on November 6th and will not stand idly by while their choice for leadership is ignored and governmental powers transferred to candidates they did not choose. This council are proving they will do anything to grab power for builders and developers who financially back their campaigns to push through road and building agendas. It is the people of Jeffrey's Ranch, Melrose, Morro Hills, Rancho del Oro who do not want these projects, some of which have already been rejected by Planning Department as being detrimental rather than providing any benefit. This council has already wasted $850,000 of the taxpayers' money by scrapping the engineering study that was unfavorable to the Melrose project and still continues to shove this project down residents' throats. Unlike this council majority, Mayor Wood has been and is listening to and representing the will of the people of Oceanside, the people whose lives and families will be affected by these projects. We urge all Oceanside voters to get involved, join the Alliance of Citizens to Improve Oceanside Neighborhoods, Action, attend meetings and other community forums, stay informed, write letters to the editors, make phone calls, network with others, pass out flyers and gather signatures when needed. The options remaining now are expensive litigation against the city or an initiative to repeal the city charter and return Oceanside to a general law city under the control of its voters, not three men on a council. There is power in numbers. Don't sit by and let your vote be ignored. It costs nothing to get involved. Help Oceanside take back its city government.
Next three speakers we have are Nadine Scott, Jim Jenkins, and Sandra Waker.
Good evening, Nadine Scott. Um, I was kind of laughing back there, Mr. Feller, because your logic wouldn't stand up in a court of law or a philosopher's court. Uh, just because someone wasn't opposed to something does not logically or legally or factually mean they're for it. We can argue facts, figures, dollars, access. It's all mood at this point. We know what you're going to do. We know lawyers have been engaged. This is a tremendous waste of city resources to do this. Because by the time you put a new member on Sand Egg, if that can ever happen, the city of San Diego will cancel out any potential possibility with their 25 votes that will ever get anything ever again. So I think it's an exercise in frustration. It's fruitless. It's a power grab. You know, it's obvious that, uh, using your logic, the majority of people elected Jim Wood to be the mayor, to make the appointments and to continue as our Sand Egg representative. So using these mixed metaphors and logics about the, the majority on the council as opposed to the majority of the voters, it's all false, it's all folly, it's all bull. And we know what it's about. It's a power grab for the pro-development members of the council. So I wish you luck with Mr. Agiri and I hope we get an actual factual legal answer by an independent judge, as Mr. Spencer suggested. Uh, I respect our city attorney, but he does work for the three of you and you can easily get rid of him if he doesn't give you the answers that you're really wanting. So let's quit wasting time. Let's move forward. Let's end the charade and get rolling on the actual legal question and just forget this ridiculous charade. Silly.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Councilmembers, my name's Jim Jenkins, 1429 Cai Marbella. I agree with everything Linda and Nadine have said, so I'm not going to go back onto that. I would like to say one thing though, Mr. Feller. Really disappointed me tonight because an item that you stated really upsets me. It seems that your position strongly more on jobs than lives. Let me tell you about the expansion of 76 out to 15. I lost a very good friend of mine on that old Bonzel Bridge who was decapitated. She lost her life at a very young age. So I'm happy for what they're doing. I'm sorry it affects jobs, but you know what? It saves lives. So put that in your back pocket. So I'm happy for what they're doing there. Lives are important. I'm going to go into a couple of little quick things here. I'm concerned that when one or numerous individuals appear to not get their way, that they can just go around and start changing policies, changing charters, changing things like that. I mean, you guys remind me of a bunch of kids on a playground. You know, if they don't get your way, you pick up your bat, ball, your bag of marbles, and you run away. I mean, come on. I mean, what happened to teamwork? What happened to team approach that we're supposed to have to work together to work things out and come up, come up with consistency and continuity within our group? As they said, our, our citizens elected individuals, elected you for your positions you're in. And I said, just because something doesn't go your way doesn't mean get together, you know, haggle it all out, plan your strategy and then take away powers from people. I just think that's such a wrongdoing and it's really important that, uh, this is not what we're about. I mean, we're a community that, that needs leaders. And, you know, and leadership is important. And also you've got to understand, you're only as powerful as the people you surround yourself with. And we as individuals in this community are here to help support you and to be a team as well. But if you're not going to listen to us and only listen to outside interest parties, then you know what? What good are you guys? You know, and it really shames me that when I go into other people's cities and they tell me, boy, you guys got a real cluster mess going up there. I'm embarrassed. Embarrassed. You know, because I talked highly about Oceanside and who we are and what we're about. But when other cities talk about what a mess we are, and it's really because of the lack of teamwork and understanding here. But like I said, you know, if you guys want extra bats and balls and bags of marbles, I'll be happy to supply them to you. But we need to work together as a team and we need to think about that more before stripping everybody's powers and, and, uh, and what they are required to do. And also legally, I mean, is that really the right thing? Are we allowed to change a charter like that? So things that we need to look into. So thank you very much.
Yvonne?
Hello there. Um, my name is Sandra Waker, 2275 Ocean View Road. And I'm just here, I'm going to actually read this from, um, the agenda. I'm here to support, um, the request by Council, Councilmember Feller to remove Mayor Jim Wood as City of Oceanside Primary Sand Egg Board Member. And also here I have about 15 emails from kind of the silent majority of those of us who never come to council meetings, but we watch them on TV and we do support our three conservative council members. I realize that, uh, we don't clap after everybody speaks, but, um, but we do support you. We are out here. We did vote for you. I also have one of these emails that says, um, "I did vote for, uh, Jim Wood. I didn't do my homework and I apologize." I also have an editorial from, um, Today's UT who goes through Jim's history or Mayor Wood's history of what he has done to the city by not supporting us on Sand Egg. So again, I would like to, um, I would like to, uh, support with the courage of the three gentlemen that have to take a lot of heat in this council all the time when we don't step forward because we are busy at our homes, uh, doing other things. But again, I do support you in, in this effort. Thank you.
Following three speakers, we have Susie Schreier, Charles McVay, and Chris Wilson.
My name is Susie Schreier.
Just be, Mike, we can't hear you.
Again. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I live at 276 North El Camino Real. And, uh, Honorable Mayor Wood, Councilmember Sanchez, Feller, Feller, and Kern. Here we are again, or rather still. It took a whole year and the final, and the final ballot and two elections for you three council members to hear the wishes of the, of Oceanside residences. And $93,000, by the way, of our taxpayers' money to get Prop E defeated. Uh, but you refused to accept the outcome of this past election. Mr. Kern, you put your name on the ballot to run for mayor. The people of Oceanside overwhelmingly voted you down. You lost. But, and Mayor Wood won and is the choice of the people for the next four years and is, and by a count of over 56%. Ninety-three are spreading rumors and lies, or rather untruths, to be more politically correct, that he is a bad mayor. For Oceanside and you, and you have the majority. You three council members are wrong. The people of Oceanside have the majority. They voted majority. And we, the people of Oceanside, have exercised our voting privileges and it is our right in our democratic government. You three also have been voted in by the people of Oceanside, but to listen and hear our voices accordingly and as elected officials, not to use this platform to advance your personal position by, by, hmm, by fiddling your agendas down our collective throats in order to further your position in future elections. City government is a nonpartisan government, not a posturing place for future agendas. It does not give you the power or the right to ignore the people who put you in the, in those seats and only, and to ignore our voices. It then becomes an abuse of those elected positions. Mayor Wood has been elected again and it is time for you three members to accept and respect that this office demands and deserves. You know, we just came back from, um, a Christmas holiday over to, uh, up to the north of, uh, the county in White Country. It's beautiful out there and there's a huge, huge population of tourists. We stayed in a unit that had 285 units. Every unit was built, but the traffic was smooth up there. There was no concern of intersections being overcrowded or, or people wanting more buildings to be there. They're happy over there, up there.
I have to stop here. Your time's up. I apologize.
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you very much. I need to want to say, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
To be fair. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charles McVay. I live at 200 North El Camino Real, Oceanside. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Kern, Feller, and Feller. I'm opposed to what you're doing. I know your minds are made up and there's nothing I can say that will change them. Therefore, this is the first of a series of things I will be doing in speeches in which I wish to inform the people to listen to so they will learn about your selfish, egotistical, vindictive actions. I want the people to remember them, especially come election time in 2014, if not sooner. I do not know how you have the amity gall to think that you would be better qualified to be on Sand Egg or for that matter, any committee. For instance, you had to have Bill Weber, Director of Government Affairs, with the Associated Builders and Contractors, prepare the shameful city charter you pushed through, even though all it took was copying portions from other cities' charters. Other words, you turned a fox loose in a chicken house. And now you have the audacity to have us to believe you are better qualified than our wonderful Mayor Wood, who is the senior mayor on Sand Egg, which in itself is very, very important in getting funds. With his experience and seniority, Mayor Woods is much more qualified than the three of you put together. If the city charter was too complicated for you to prepare, my God, how can you even think about wanting to set on Sand Egg Committee, which is much more complicated than the charter? There is no possible way under those circumstances that you'd be able to accomplish anything with Sand Egg. I believe what you're doing tonight was hatched up in back rooms because it has not only the smell but resemblance to another Bill Weber input. I believe this was your backup plan in case Councilmember Kern lost the mayor election, which he did by a whopping majority. In other words, you lost a marble and now you want to make new rules where you will be, be the only winners. If you really cared about the welfare of Oceanside, you would resign from office immediately. What you are doing is nothing but vindictive. As I said, this is the first of a series of speeches. In the meantime, I ask the people to keep coming to the council meetings and when they can't, tune into Channel 19 and to listen and see what is going on. And we all need to keep abreast of what's going on. And from time to time, you'll see me or hear me feeding you information, keeping you informed. Until next time, good evening and thanks for listening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, Chris Wilson, 770 Harbor Cliff Way here in Oceanside. Uh, my main concern here is that this action, which is before you tonight, uh, seems premature. Uh, we just heard, uh, in the report from the city attorney regarding the closed-session actions that, uh, the ordinance to give you the power to appoint representatives, uh, needs to be readopted because I, some procedural i's weren't dotted and t's weren't crossed. Uh, basically, you've decided to go down a road before the road was totally built. And now we find out that, hey, there's a section missing or a bridge that needs to be fixed up before that road's safe to be traveled down, but we're going to charge ahead and start down the road before we're sure that it's completed. And, uh, that just strikes me as acting prematurely. Uh, when, uh, one of the things that I've learned in my dealings with the, uh, fairer half of our species is that, uh, when things happen prematurely, a lot of times, nobody gets satisfied. So, uh, I, I would encourage you to reconsider and think about, uh, delaying this action until, uh, you're sure that you have the power to do what you want to do. Thank you.
Uh, before the next speaker, if I may, I know it's nice to applaud. Other council meetings stop the applause because it's time-consuming. I found out from the past- Before the next speaker, if I may, I know it's nice to applaud. Other council meetings stop the applause because it's time consuming. I found out from the past when I asked you not to applaud. You go ahead and do it anyhow, both sides. I know it makes both sides happy. It's just getting late, and I know you all wouldn't want to go home. So just, if you would, let the people speak and hold yourself. If you continue, I understand. Sorry. Go ahead.
Final speaker is David Terrell.
Hi. I'm David Terrell, 276 North El Camino Real. Just intended to make a couple of comments here. You know, Jim Wood is the only one that was elected with more than 50 percent, which is something that Mr. Faleen wanted to get done with one of his propositions. He wanted to make sure that everyone got elected with 50 percent, because if you're not elected with 50 percent, according to Mr. Faleen, you're not legitimate. So the only one up here who's legitimate is-- Give me a break. Give me a break. And Mr. Faleen, you were also very interested about public safety. There's only two council members who have a lot of experience with public safety, Jim Wood and Esther Sanchez. You can listen to them about public safety anytime, and you really should.
We have one more request to speak from Diane Hansen.
Hi. My name is Diane Hansen. I live at 200 North El Camino Real. I used to live off of Rancho Del Oro. And when I heard about the freeway on ramp, I thought, "I do not want to live anywhere near this street. The traffic is already bad on Rancho Del Oro. I can't even imagine it getting worse." The putting up of more traffic signals there has really not helped the traffic flow. I voted for Mayor Wood, and I voted for Esther Sanchez, and I would do it again in a minute. I feel that Mayor Wood and Esther Sanchez represent the citizens of Oceanside, and therefore, that's why we don't have a ramp at Rancho Del Oro, and I am happy about that. Mayor Woods represents the citizens of Oceanside, and he votes as they request. Mayor Wood also represents us on SandAg, and that should not be changed. If any changes should be made to any board, it should be to get rid of FF and K. Thank you.
No further public at this time.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Before I go to the council member, for everybody in the audience, thank you for coming up. Whatever side you're on, this is your opportunity to come here and speak, and I appreciate it. That's what this is for. You have your three minutes, not much time, but you get to say your words. Thank you very much. With that, I go to the council. Councilmember Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to address some of the points that were made by Councilmember Faleen. He made, he started off by talking about the Rancho Del Oro interchange, and he seemed to make a statement, I was trying to draw the line, like, okay, we're talking about our SandAg rep, and he's discussing an action that was done by a council, a city council prior to this city council. So bottom line is that Mayor Woods, whether or not he was on SandAg at the time, had nothing to do, absolutely nothing to do with the, with a council majority saying enough is enough, and they took, and we took the RDO interchange off the circulation element. Now, before that happened, thousands of letters had been received by federal highways. The hope was to get money from federal highways, and federal highways basically told us, and this is through Caltrans, that there was no way that they were going to be looking at supporting or providing funds for a highly controversial project. Highly controversial because of all the environmental issues, it's a wildlife corridor, it's also melted adobe, an adobe, historic resources. There were several, several reasons why this was highly, highly controversial and continues to be. At the time, we were talking about over $100 million. This is not, and the fact that Carlsbad had already deleted the road on the other side meant the entire project was only going to be a City of Oceanside project, not a regional project. SandAg does not fund non-regional projects. So in essence, what I'm trying to do here is explain to Councilmember Faleen, who may not have, you know, either had a chance to review our history or perhaps didn't realize how it came about, but it had nothing to do with, with Mayor Wood being on SandAg. In fact, it was Mayor Johnson who led the charge to remove the connection with RDO interchange. It was, it was a completely different council. So that was removed, the lights were removed. It was, and Councilmember Feller is shaking his head, but I was there, you were there. It was, the mayor was Terry Johnson, and Jim was there, and we, we all, as a council, took out the connection. So, and I don't believe that Jim was SandAg rep at the time. In fact, I think that the, the, the combining of SandAg with transportation happened a little after that. There is also, Councilmember Faleen also talked about, you know, a majority, that the, that we just had an election, and the majority has spoke, and the public has spoken. Well, the public did speak. We had, three of us were running as a team. Team Oceanside is what we were called. And that was Mayor Wood for reelection, myself for reelection, and Dana Corso. And we had very different policies that we believe are in the best interest of the city. Jim and I are lifelong residents of Oceanside. We just had Christmas, we had four generations in our home. My grandfather was still alive, who came here, that would be five generations, being in Oceanside since the '30s. Jim has been in Oceanside, he came here when he was, you know, what, a year, two years, five years old? Okay. We, Jim has been a lifelong public servant. He has walked these streets, he has protected these streets. For 31 years, he was a police officer, put his life on the line every single day. Every single day, he had to, you know, and there were times when, of course, he had to stay at the, at the office or at, you know, on the streets or whatever. Every single day, he, he knew that one day, he, you know, there was a possibility that he may not come back to his family, every single day. He did that for 31 years. So, yes, public safety, we, public safety, in fact, roads, very important to police officers and whether or not they work, because we know how critical roads are to making sure that the, the public response, that the response time is, is optimum. So Jim came, became a city council member, rapidly became a mayor, and has been the most popular mayor in the history of the City of Oceanside. No one has ever gotten as many votes as Jim Wood has gotten as mayor. This past election, he received 30,844 votes, 54 percent. Now, I said that there were two other people who were running. I ran as well for reelection, and I got 27 percent of the vote. If you take, if, if people with, and people had, had the right to vote twice, so if you double that, I also received about 54 percent of the vote. So we've got two council members who have a history of-- Madam, if you could please, I know you voted for different people.
Excuse me. I don't want to conversation to any audience in the council, please. I didn't say it was. Thank you. Thank you. I'm just saying. Thank you.
So, and Dana Corso came very close to tumbling Mr. Feller here. She did. In two months, she was able to get within 1,000 votes. And that was with two mailers, wherein Councilmember Feller probably, you know, with all the money that he got from the developer community, had, we had one mailer per, you know, almost every single day coming from Councilmember Feller. So he spent probably 10 to 1 times in order to beat Dana Corso. So Dana Corso, who unfortunately is not here today, is someone that really has supported the people, and she also does not believe in the Rancho Del Oro interchange. Now, back to what we're really here, why we're really here, and that is, there's a motion on, on the dais here to remove a very, very popular mayor from SandAg. Very popular. It is unprecedented. What we're doing here is we're losing our public relations with other cities. We're talking about regional government. That means other cities need to work with us. We need to work with other cities. Why would any other city representative mayor or mayor's representative want to work with someone who is willing to go to do some unethical thing? How can you trust someone to be there for you when you, heck, you are not there, going to be there for your mayor, who was elected by almost 2 to 1? It is just unprecedented. It is, it has been embarrassing. I've been to different cities, spoken to different council members in the last, in last month, and all I hear is the very discouraging remarks about what has been happening on the dais by our, these three council members. It's very, very embarrassing. We had a contest, a very, very fair contest, and the people have spoken. It was a high voter turnout, what, 74 percent? 75?
It was 77.
77. 77 percent. You know, I, I spoke to a lot of people about voting and exercising their right to vote. So we have, we have the results. Why we would want to change the rules in the middle of it, just because we didn't get what we wanted? You know, Jim and I have, we're very passionate. We're very passionate about people. I think that's why he is, he is elected over and over again. And this time, I don't think you did a whole lot to get yourself elected, Jim. And it's because he honestly cares. You know, on the other hand, you know, we have Councilmember Faleen, who, who is, who is very upfront about where he gets his direction, when, you know, during, you know, I've heard from other council members, as I said, from other cities, who say, "Yeah, Councilmember Faleen, he's very upfront about, you know, only listening to his donors." When confronted about, "Well, you know, now that you're elected, you need to listen to your constituents because, you know, those are the people that count." He said, "No, no. The first person that I listen to is my first major donor."
I mean, that's personal order, Mayor. I'm not going to have Councilwoman Sanchez lie about what she claims I said. Do I not get appointed personal order when she's claiming to quote me?
I think you have to be recognized, sir, if you--
I'm not going to appoint a personal order. Now, when you're standing there lying about what you claim I said, and you're quoting me, I want to know if I have a right of personal order here to contest this oral diarrhea.
Well, she's had her opportunity to speak. You certainly will get your opportunity to speak, and the quote she just said, I heard.
Yes.
No, you didn't.
Yes.
I never said there and said, "I only listen to--
I heard of another council person on another--
Another council person? Okay, yeah, just more rumor. But I want to know--
I understand.
--what was from the city attorney and whether or not I ever right to appoint--
I think you will have your chance, sir.
You have it later, you're going to be finishing up.
Well, I just want to know--
It's up to the chair to recognize.
Thank you. I'm not going to right now. You get your chance. Please.
So, I obviously am against this. I don't see what the point is. I don't believe this is furthering the citizens of, the interests of the citizens of Oceanside. We have a completely different SandAg representation that's going forward, and it is a, and these are people who actually recognize climate change, which I know a majority of our council does not. It recognizes the importance of sustainability, which I understand the majority on the council does not. It recognizes, you know, our biggest challenge are sustainable, green jobs. San Diego City is a lead. We have the ability, as a council, to be able to do that. And yet, we continue to talk about things that are not green. We continue to talk about things that will never see the light of day. I believe that the RDO interchange is dead. It's never going to get any money. It's never, ever, ever going to get funded. Any money going towards that is a complete waste. And we should be instead focused on making coast highway work. That is where we have a consensus on the dais, I believe. There are so many more issues that we have consensus on that there is no reason, there is absolutely no reason to focus on one or two highly controversial projects. We owe it to our constituents to work together. Put aside, you know, those ideas and work together. We've got two years to the next election. Let's make these two years count. Let's talk about positive projects that we can be proud of, that would receive funding. You know, I, I get really sad whenever I see other cities getting funding because they're doing smart growth projects, but City of Oceanside doesn't do smart growth projects. You know, we're talking about urbanizing South Moro Hills with the, with the Melrose Extension. We're talking about having to build all this infrastructure that would basically bankrupt the city, that would definitely lower the quality of life of all of our residents. Who wants to pay for sewage treatment plant out east? Who wants to pay for all of those improvements? Who wants to have lower quality of life because we're already stretched? We don't have any, any services out there, and yet here we are paying for a, for a sewage study for South Moro Hills, our ag lands, where we should be talking about agritourism. We should be talking about maintaining our green belt and focusing our growth where there already is, where the services already are. So that is, that should be our challenge for this year and for next, that we focus on, on the positive things that will unite this, this council. We already have challenges, jobs, our returning, that, our returning service, servicemen and women. We need to do that and not focus on this negative. Thank you.
I don't have any other lights on. I know when we finish up, we'll go to Mr. Faleen, but ask Mr. Feller.
Thank you. One thing that we need to correct right now is, RDO was removed in 2005 when Sherry Mackin came aboard and Mayor Wood and Esther Sanchez. And Sherry Mackin removed that from the project and threw away, I think it was about $1,002, that was, but that was 2005 when they removed that. It has always been the prerogative of the council to remove members of the Board of SandAg or NCTD, for that matter. It started when the mentor for all of this slow growth and, and, and smart growth was removed Larry Bagley. Melba Bishop, Don Rodi, and Nancy York removed him when he was to be chairman of SandAg. So it's always been the prerogative. In, in 2005, it was permitted to-- It started when the mentor for all of this slow growth and smart growth was removed, Larry Bagley. Melba Bishop, Don Rodi, and Nancy York removed him when he was to be chairman of Sandag. So it's always been the prerogative. In 2005, it was permitted to, you weren't permitted to vote for yourself if you were to receive the stipend. So Mayor Wood attended for the first six months after they removed me, and then in the following year, Councilmember Mackin attended the Sandag for that year. In all of this time, in Mayor Wood's time on the council, on the Sandag Board, we have not received one of the premier committee assignments, and that is transportation or planning for the city, and he hasn't taken them himself. He was entitled to two positions for the City of Oceanside, two primary positions. There are ten assignments that are available for the five regional cities, which are Delmar, Solana Beach, Encinitas, Carlsbad, and Oceanside. Oceanside is comparatively the size of all four of those cities put together. Oceanside is the 134th largest city in the country, and we need our say at Sandag. It's not about power, it's about common sense. We need those appointments on those working committees where transportation is, the dollars are accumulated and spent. The Sandag Board usually rubber stamps what Sandag, what the Sandag committees put up to the meetings. So we still don't have those appointments, and hopefully, with a change, we can get some of those appointments. I think it's, you know, it's incumbent of us to try to get those appointments and not have the mayor not doing it himself or putting us in lesser committees, which don't have the opportunity to fight for those dollars. So I think that we need to go forward. We can't, we can't allow this to continue. Things have changed with the rulemakers in Sacramento for whether you can vote for yourself as we go forward. That just happened in March. We approved it in November, in one of the meetings in November, and I think this is the time to go forward. I just, I don't know how to say it any other way, but we, the citizens of Oceanside deserve the seats on those premier committees, and they should be taking advantage of it. We need the interchange at 78 and I-5. We need Rancho del Oro. I mean, if you spent any time at all during the Christmas holidays over on Lake and College, it's a zoo, and it's not gonna get any better with Carlsbad's new project. I mean, we really should be building that full interchange at Rancho del Oro and connecting to Morone Road through that habitat, but I don't think that's ever gonna happen either. So I, it's incumbent of us to try. And actually, I know, it only seems like a thousand votes that I won by, but I actually did win, so they obviously didn't trust the entire team, Oceanside.
I just wanted to remind the council that it was actually Mayor Wood and myself who placed the I-578 on the Public Works Plan for the Coastal Commission to review. So because of Mayor Wood's help in getting the mayors involved and getting that before Sandag, and helping me get Gary Gallegos on to do this for the Buena Vista, for the Buena Vista Lagoon, it was only Mayor Wood who was able to do this. No other council members would have been able to help me at all from this dais, unfortunately. So he was instrumental in getting I-578 on the Public Works Plan for Caltrans, which is now going to the Coastal Commission. Just needed you to, you know, again, there seems to be a lack of information here. Also, the connection was removed on the other side, on Oceanside's land. It was removed by a council that had Terry Johnson as mayor. So that, again, is just a correction of what has been said here. Thanks. Oh, and one, last thing. Mayor Wood is a Republican. It should not matter, you know, what, you know, how we're registered to vote. That is something very personal, very, and for me, very patriotic, and how we each decide to register to vote, and how we're going to go forward in this world and in political discourse. Mayor Wood is a moderate Republican in a city that is almost evenly divided now between Democrats and Republicans. We have, what, twenty percent of our registered voters are declined to state. And so, in this, in this time, it really matters, it really, really matters to have a leader who is able to work on all sides of the aisle, on all three, four, or five, whatever it is, sides of the aisle, and that is why Jim Wood has been so successful, regionally as well as a council member and mayor here for City of Oceanside. So having extremists does not help our city. It simply does not. So again, that is another reason why this action is not gonna get us anywhere. It's not gonna get any appointments. You know, when you have someone who, you don't have the seniority of Mayor Wood on Sandag, they're not gonna listen to that person. So it's unfortunate. This is, this action today is ill-advised in terms of best interest of the city, ill-advised, and is just gonna make things worse for our city at Sandag. Thanks.
If I may, ladies and gentlemen, both sides. I feel like I should just say nothing and move on, but I know my friends, people who support me, want to get me involved, want to get a lawyer, want to sue the city, and all those other little things that come with it. With that, I know I said something at the last meeting, and some of the faces are familiar with the little yellow tags. I appreciate it. I was told once, bad advertisement is just as good as any other advertisement. Some of you guys have my name on there. I thank you for that. Other than that, I try to keep a smiling humor because you have to in this job. I've given like forty-five years to the City of Oceanside as a police officer, detective, and as a councilman, as a mayor. Has nothing to do with my popularity. I think what it is, is I try to be in the middle. When I say that, is we are supposed to be nonpartisan at this level. When you put your name on the ballot, you can't say Republican or Democrat at local level. You just have to say you or what your job is. It's for a reason, and now, in the last ten years of being in public office, I found out it's very helpful. And she indicated I am a Democrat, excuse me, I'm not a Democrat, but I lean that way. Now, let me think, I lean that way on a lot of issues because, take my job. I have to go ask for money in important things, and I have to go to Sacramento, who do you think rules out there? I have to go to Washington DC, who do you think rules there? It's the Democratic Party, Bozley, and most of those locations. When I go back to Washington DC like I've done for the last ten years, the people I really go see are Feinstein and Boxer and Darrell Issa. Those are the three I see. If I go there being one side or the other, I'm gonna get a problem. I'm gonna get no money. I'm gonna get no results from the federal or the state government. The state government in Sacramento, I think, is a lost cause, you know, in my own little way. They can't function totally, but like I say, when I have to deal with them, you put yourself in my spot. If I'm gonna walk into the big money brokers like Feinstein and Boxer, who are my representatives in the Senate, you better be somebody that's nonpartisan in the middle if you're gonna get something, or you better be a very strong Democrat. Obviously, same thing in Sacramento. Right, wrong, or indifferent. So I have to say a few things, and I might bore some of you, but I appreciate the time. A lot of things were said tonight, and I know, I think you need to know it on TV, who's watching, and I'm certainly gonna say it. When this all came up, I don't think removing me from Sandag hurts me. If I don't go, I don't go. I have plenty of other things to do, believe me, but it really hurts the voters, in my opinion. That's why I stood up and said, this is not right. Not only for the past, the present, and the future mayors of Oceanside is why I said it shouldn't be done. For the last hundred and twenty-five years, we've been a general law city. With that, even the Attorney General said, I have the right as a mayor to appoint. Sandag understood that, too. The council could probably remove me. It's a political issue, but I think they can do that. But say they do it, and I'm removed. If they remove me, they probably gonna have to remove my alternate one and two also because I put them on. Down the road after the thirty days after this issue, they can pick people if I don't. By bringing up a name, I'm sure they're not gonna pick that person, so they're gonna be running that aspect that the mayor used to do, me or any other mayor. So I'm trying to say that's not right, and I'll take it on to show you that I'm not gonna roll over. I asked the city attorney, that he's in conflict with the floating majority, so he can't give me legal advice, so I asked for legal representation to try to say, this is not about me, it's about the issue. I didn't get that from the council majority. They said, no. I said, how about even something simpler, it won't cost the city taxpayers a dime? Send a letter requesting the Attorney General for an opinion. No charge. They didn't want to do that either. I had to go out and hire an attorney law firm on my own, out of my own pocket, because I think it's that important. They said quite a few things. Somebody used to be the attorney for San Diego and two other partners that used to be city attorneys in San Diego. They thought this was inappropriate and possible, some of it illegal. What we had is a gentleman said they wanted to remove me and change the ordinances. Part of that is, who knows? Maybe the Attorney General says, under our charter, we refer everything back to the general law aspect of it. Everything refers back to what the city used to be unless they change it. Well, most people voted me into office thinking I'm the mayor to do all this stuff. They came along and said they want to change the ordinance that says they have control. And they probably have the right, that's certain opinions. I get a lot of opinions from other attorneys saying, no, that's not correct. We know how the system works. Some judge will make a decision or whatever, not attorneys. With that, I started asking points. What they saw right off the bat is, if you remember, to set an appointment for a council meeting, it's done at the first of the year by the entire council, what dates they are, generally speaking. They decided when they want this done, they wanted to rush it through and get me out of Sandag as soon as possible. And if I was on their side, I'd probably agree with them. However, what they were gonna do when they pulled me out, they don't want me involved in the selection of the subgroups, the five of them in the North County Coastal, and they're afraid that I'll pick somebody they don't want or none of them. Understandable. I want you to understand this. The problem with that is that they tried to rush the thing. They called for a special election. They can't do it. So they called it something else to make it a special election, and the only item on that agenda that night was their item regarding this issue, convinced the thirty-day time for the second vote and thirty days after. I told you at that time I thought it was illegal and he couldn't do it. The attorney firm I says, they can't do it. Because of that, they're gonna come back and get a second vote on this thing on January sixteenth because of the fear of litigation. So that tells me there's a problem, legally speaking. May not agree if somebody else has to do it, but they're gonna have to re-vote again and start that for the thirty days. So they had to remove me now because that thirty days would make me on the policy on Sandag to appoint people to subcommittees. Now I'm getting boring, I realize that, but there's other issues. They also called for that meeting with three people signing it, three council members. They also think that's a blatant violation of the Brown Act, which is a criminal offense, not just a violation, a violation of the law. And about talking about the particular meeting and what it was about would be a Brown Act. Three people were involved in it, that's a Brown Act violation. So our law firm is looking at those angles and some other issues along with other law groups that are coming in there. So this isn't gonna go away easy. The sad part of it, some of you out there and on TV are gonna be paying for some of these legal fees in the long run, probably. And some of these gentlemen might have to look at criminal charges. That's just my opinion. So that's the highlights that get us to this point. Now, here's the other one. When I was running in 2002, one of the hot issues was Highway 78 at RDO. Everywhere I walked, that was one of the hot items. What I found, I was talking with Carlsbad, all the neighbors, Caltrans, Congressman Issa, you name it, nobody was gonna support this intersection. Not only the cost, they didn't want it. Congressman Issa told me right to my face, he would not support anything that has controversy because there's too many other projects that don't have it. So at Sandag, and when I was down there on all the other issues, the number one issue for Oceanside, the number one that I heard all the time was finish Highway 76 up to 15. As you know, this last year was a number one priority for Sandag, that issue. We had some controversy with it, and it got delayed because of land that we had to buy, eighty acres of land, mitigation land. Can you believe it? We had to buy it, eighty acres of land for the mitigation land that we were taking. But it took a while. Sorry, I didn't like it. The next big issue was Interstate 5 widening all the way up to Oceanside. HOV, Diamond Lane, just what they call that, was a priority. It started south, coming north for one reason only. The Buena Vista Lagoon, they had to do an environmental impact on that, widening the highway, plus 78 interchanged with I-5, a flyover going into 78, and started to have the traffic like that. That's a priority, and I've been pushing it. The eight hundred million dollars you heard about being taken away from us and moving somewhere, and I voted for it because environmental impact to report for that area had not been done by the fishing game. I haven't touched it. They won't send money to projects that don't have it all done and shovel-ready. So it moved to the next item down on the list, which was down south. Yes, I voted for it because that was the next item of approval down there, and this one was not ready, and they couldn't vote on it. You may like it or not. The only reason that's gonna change for I-5 and 78 interchange for widening of the freeway and the flyover to 78 to make it nicer is that my councilwoman, Esther Sanchez, it's in the coastal zone. She jumped on board, along with the mayor of Carlsbad, myself. We paid a hundred thousand dollars, and Carlsbad had paid a hundred thousand dollars with the help from her for the Coastal Commission to get that project going and do the environmental impact report before we could do it. Sandag took eight hundred thousand dollars out of their purse to do it for us with our input and time and money. That, I thought, was very important for Oceanside and North County. So yes, I did that. Some of the other things I did for them, whatever, I'm sure everybody down there would try to do the same thing. But if you understand, there's eighteen cities sitting on that. It's a compromise every time you vote. San Diego City gets twenty-five power votes. I'm the third largest city in this county, I get five. San Diego City gets twenty-five. The county of San Diego gets twenty-five. Get those two together, you can't beat them. But with that in mind, all the cities have power votes. It's been a compromise on everything that's been done in Sandag every single time. I'm the senior mayor from the North San Diego County area. I deal every day for two years with all the mayors in the North Counties. We're trying to do a lot of things together, so yes, I do work. I'm not patting myself on the back, I'm just telling you for your sake. All these things you talk about, Melrose Drive, that's been on the list since I started running. People want that to go through for to get a bridge over the river all the way out to Moro Hills. The people that want in Melrose to go through, it's a city of this stuff where they could do a thousand houses, which would impact our city, but they can't get an environmental impact approval on traffic mitigation because they can't with their houses, they have to have the road go through at Melrose. The neighborhood doesn't want it, it's used as a cut through. So there's a lot of issues you... So there's a lot of issues you individually may not know about, it's, there's hot items for both of those. They probably won't get funded here or at Sand Egg. And the reason I say that is, that money in the 2030 and 2050 plan in Sand Egg has been voted on by everybody at Sand Egg, and it stands. If you want to get more money, you're going to have to take it from somebody else in some other city. Good luck on that one. And the other thing is, on the vote aspects or anything we do, the environmental world, the environmental world just sued Sand Egg and won in court over mass transit, over transportation on highways. That means we're going to have Sand Egg go back and probably get a lot of the money back to mass transit away from highways. That'll be a big impact on highways that we want to go towards that nobody else wants. So I'm telling you, the money might go to railroad lines and mass transit, not highways. Yes, I've been there, I heard this, they have or haven't. Now let's get to the important part of it. Not only do I think they did a Brown Act violation and maybe violated some other issues that we'll look into later, and it may cost you the taxpayer money, and I apologize for that, but I asked to do some free things that they didn't want to do. That's okay. I'm also concerned about people in Oceanside, even Sand Egg, I talk all the things about other issues. Gregory Canyon landfill, they want to poison our water downstream, the most important commodity we have in Southern California, water. We're one of the rare cities that do underground water, desalate right now, and get about a certain percentage, almost up to 20% of our water from underground sources. If they did Gregory Canyon, they'll pollute it. We fought it for 15 to 20 years and always said no to it. These guys changed and said they want to support it and poison our water in all little ways. So we have some concerns here that we all don't agree on, but they're important to all of us, so keep that in mind. I guess one of the other ones is that, no matter what I do or you do tonight, or they do, I'll understand it. It's all about voting. But remember, my big issue here for you, and I want to tell you this, is when you went with a kind of a semi-land side and people want to put you back in, and I'm the only person in years that's ever had 50% or more, that tells me I got elected. Remember Proposition F with these CGI's putting how we vote in Oceanside? Says you don't get elected, you only get 50% or more. I'm the only person that's ever gotten 50% or more in any of the elections. If they had gone under their policy, they wouldn't be here today. What can I tell you? So with that in mind, there's changes, there's policies. I try to be nonpartisan because it helps the city, not just you, the city, in dealing with these people. Some of your roadways you're here to talk about, you're not going to get with the latest lawsuit out of Sand Egg. We'll see where it goes. Like I say, in some of these legal issues, I was a cop for a long time, and we used to get beat up all the time calling it, the fruit of the poison tree. Some of you have never heard that. Which means, all along, the entire investigation, or whatever it might be, you make one mistake, that's the fruit of the poison tree, it's all thrown out. I think these gentlemen have grabbed some fruit that's poisoned and violated some issues, they might throw everything out later on in court. We'll see where that goes. Let me get some notes here, I want to say this. The charter city, I got to say this, ladies and gentlemen, we moved from a general law city for 125 years to a charter city. The reason for it, why these gentlemen, was that it would save us money and mainly the PLA unions. The California Supreme Court has addressed those issues, so no longer an issue for that issue on charter cities. Matter of fact, we have to do something about it before 2015 legally and vote on it. But what it says to us, they had people from the building industry write it, put it on without any input from any of you here or in the audience in City of Oceanside. The city attorney didn't even read it, neither did the city manager. It was put on by D.C. General, put it on the ballot, and you voted on it. You thought it was a good thing. What they're using a charter city for is to do things like this. They circumventing, circumventing the public's vote by what they did, the majority vote, and saying, build backdoor and do it somehow by changing the charter city. And I've heard some people out there, quite a few of them, saying they'd like to put something on the ballot to change this back to a general law city because they're abusing the charter city. You shake your head, but I'm telling you, it's a high possibility. A lot of the things they can do are going to charge you and all the other people in City of Oceanside money and time. Whatever, if they take me off, they don't hurt me, they hurt you. A long, boring story with that, and I think that pretty well covers unless the city attorney has something. It's only proper that I pass the last comments to Mr. Fellaini, who put it on. Gary, it's your shot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess it's easy for some of my colleagues to make their speeches when you're untethered from the truth here, and so I guess to reorientate myself here, I guess my first question is to the city manager. When did the vote take place that turned down the environmental report on the Rancho del Oro interchange?
I don't have the specific time. I was asked, that's certainly something we can look up, but I don't have that in front of me right now.
Yeah, well, my recollection matches Councilman Feller's recollection, that it was a vote in 2005 with a majority of Wood, Sanchez, and Mackin, so I don't understand the bizarre comment that Mayor Wood had nothing to do with destroying that project. So I'm certainly confused about that. The other issue, dealing with the supposedly criminal activities, boy, I'm worried now. Mr. City Attorney, I guess so I can avoid wearing the orange jumpsuit, I better get something cleared up here. How are special meetings called? What are the two methods to call a special meeting?
Special meeting can be called on 24 hours, noticed by the mayor or alternatively by a majority of the council.
And that majority would be three members? Is that not correct?
Yes.
Three members? So how can three members obey the law to call a special meeting while violating the law, threatening us all with criminal charges?
No, I'm sorry, I thought that... If you need, for purposes of scheduling the meeting, you're of course not allowed to discuss the substance of the action to be taken.
Exactly. So what we have here is obviously three members have to get together and sign a document so that three members can approve a special meeting, now having been the one who hand-carried that document for Councilman Kern and Councilman Feller to sign. And believe me, based on the timing, we didn't have a chance to say much more than hello, so you could certainly guarantee there's absolutely no substance, any claims of criminal activity or any other such silly nonsense. Also, and I know there's some confusion here, so it's understandable because there's two dynamics going on at the same time. One is the motion to remove Mayor Wood as primary representative. The other is my ordinance to broaden the input for appointments to regional boards and commissions. The ordinance of which I've proposed even before today's settlement is not even in effect yet. So, Mr. City Attorney, did we have the power to remove regional board members as a general law city?
There's different statutes for each different regional board or commission, so since you're dealing with Sand Egg, I'll address the Sand Egg statute. That's Public Utility Code, Section 13235, 1.1, and that effectively provides that the board shall be composed of one primary representative selected by the governing body of each city and the county, and a member of the San Diego County Board of Supervisors to serve until recalled by the governing body of the city. So the definition of governing bodies provided in subdivision B of that statute, and it effectively provides for cities like Oceanside where the mayor is part of the council, but the governing body is the city council.
Okay, so the point is, this issue of whether or not it's a good idea or a bad idea, or whether the vote succeeds or doesn't succeed, has nothing whatsoever to do with the fact that we're a charter city. Now, I love the convenient lapse of memory as well, dealing with a charter city, and that the primary purpose of a charter city, and why we voted for a charter city by a 10-point margin in the June 2010 election, was the fact that it allowed us to save millions of dollars in prevailing wage costs. And that right as a city, a city charter city, to save the money on prevailing wage was decided by a landslide decision in front of the California Supreme Court, I believe it was seven to two, if I'm not mistaken, and upholding in this case, a case dealing with our next-door neighbor, Vista. So I'm proud to be part of, I wasn't on the city council at the time, but certainly a citizen, the support of the charter that saved millions of dollars for the taxpayers of the city. So I don't know what the opponents of the charter want to do, give all the money back or what, but I think it's great having this charter and that we should move forward. Now, all the particulars, we've certainly rehashed and plowed this ground over and over again, so I think, you know, it really comes down to, you know, we had an election, the election, you know, democracy's an imperfect process, you know, and the five of us sit up here, not as a result of one election cycle, we sit up here as a result of two election cycles. Yeah, the mayor and Councilwoman Sanchez had a good cycle this time, and they're to be congratulated. But Jerry Kern and myself are up here as a result of the 2010 election cycle. Councilman Feller won as a result of the, you know, 2012 election cycle. So one has to factor in both elections when looking at how we derive the majorities that are up here. And the voters through this imperfect process, at least on this issue, I'm guessing, has a 3-2 majority that's here as a result of the total election process, not just a selective review of part of the election process. So with that, I thank everyone for their time and ask for a vote on my item.
Real quick, I forgot, I had to check my notes. I know you were last, real quick. I just wanted to say one last thing. I represent the citizens, not the voting members of the council. Thank you, that's all I want to say. If you want to add something, be my guest. Could we please vote, please?
Motion approved, 3-2. Wood and Sanchez, no.
And clarification from the city? Clarification from the city attorney or the city manager, whoever wishes. What's the policy at Sand Egg? If I'm removed, does that take the alternate and the second alternate off until there's a new vote, which is going to be 30 days after?
According to Mr. Kirk, who's the general counsel for the Sand Egg Board, it would not, it would be the primary representative would remain vacant until another, until an appointment is made by this council. So we'd have to confer with Mr. Kirk about how the roles of the alternate with regard to assuming duties of the primary. I'd have to pass that issue on to him. You can address that with Mr. Kirk.
Well, I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time, your comments, and have a good evening, and be safe. With that, I still have time, and item's on here. Could we, item number 20, Mr. City Attorney?
Number 20 is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 28A of the Oceanside City Code to provide informal bidding procedures under the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Motion approved.
Public on this?
No, public on this.
Motion, please?
Motion approved.
Comments?
I just want to claim I abstain on this vote since I wasn't here to hear everything. I talked to the city attorney, it was my option, so I think I'm just going to abstain from this vote since I wasn't here for the hearing of the item.
That's fine. He's going to push abstain. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0. Kern, it's tea.
I'd like to ask the council, the only thing that's left on here is the council reports. Do you want to skip those?
Yes.
I don't have anything.
Well, the only request I have is, we all need Diane Nydager, and she passed away. So the only thing I'd ask is that we close the meeting and remember to prepare how to move in a silence.
Love to do that, if y'all don't mind. What a sweetheart, absolutely. Stand for a moment for closure here, and before I do that, when we finish up, we'll adjourn until Wednesday, January 16th, 2013, at 2 o'clock here. Thank you very much, and for a few moments of silence. Thank you, Jerry, for that one. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and she will be missed. Good night.